This is a meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Pittsburgh on Monday, May 13, 2019. And I'll start the meeting with the chairman of the Board. Thank you. Jay Farrell, please.
Everyone, I ask your pledge.
[inaudible]
Do you have your agenda before you? And this agenda has changed from one time to the other, and so I would simply like to present it to the Board tonight with the idea that I believe that this is an integrity issue. At the end of last meeting, we discussed having a meeting which would be a work session early in the meeting so that we could hash out and go over details of the tree ordinance, tree element. And so then it, and so initially, that was the way the agenda was published, to make this next section from 6:00 to 6:45 to be a work session. Then, the other night when we had a joint meeting with the county commissioners, it was revealed that that had been changed so that we would have old business and have the Chatham Park additional element for tree protection first thing, and then go into the regular agenda. Because our minutes say that this was to be a work session, and because when I listened to the audio recording, it was a work session, I personally feel that it needs to be a work session. And that would, of course, mean that there would be no vote during a work session. So, is there any feeling on the part of the Board that it's similar to my feeling?
I agree.
There's things we still need to work through that we're getting closer, but I think there are things we need to work through.
Well, I'll say that this is my file on the tree element. It's, it's quite a bit, and I think the provided commentary in response to Chatham Park, they have addressed those comments. And my recollection is that at the end of our meeting, it was the intent, my understanding of the intent was that some of us were, got up for working through that issue entirely, and wanted to make sure that it was fresh at the very next meeting to work through this issue. And I left the meeting thinking, completely thinking, that that was a good plan, that we would come to our next meeting, take up the matter first, and not let anything else get in the way, and or, well, get in the way of us devoting our attention to it. And that's where I think the agenda is, and I think we should follow through with this agenda. I think if we take this up, and if we find it acceptable, then we act on it. If not, then we don't. But we have had numerous meetings on this matter, and I think we have such minor changes to document the commentary, comments that were provided last meeting, that I see the reason why we would not move forward, debate it in earnest, and take action if we feel appropriate.
We feel like what you just said was key, and that was that we were discussing it and finished that again as we were to retire. So now I find that we still needed, and it wasn't, if you read it, we still had something. Because other ones were going on at that time, we still had things to talk about.
And I think, I think as an agenda item, we can talk about. And we can make requests of Chatham Park to entertain additional comments, or not.
[inaudible]
Not everyone's comments have been addressed. Not everyone's comments have been incorporated. I've found items that were agreed and clarified in work sessions, and those clarifications were not put in writing. And I have, still have substantive concerns about the document. And the bottom line is that this feels like, I won't use the word shenanigans, but it feels like a very strange situation when we went away with an agreement that we were doing a work session. To surprise of three members of this body, it appears as an agenda item during a quote-unquote "regular" meeting, which was scheduled at 6:00 p.m. to be a work session. So, I move that we modify the agenda to have the 6:00 to 7:00 session be a work session, as previously agreed. And to have the tree element added to old business on the rest of the agenda, as Ms. Alice has proposed.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Well, I'm not-
Go ahead.
At the end of the meeting, I was under the impression that we would be discussing this as well, but I was not under the impression that it was a work session. However, from what Mr. Bonnet has indicated in reference to having a work session and then placing that under old business, that actually would be fine.
I agree with that.
So, does he pay for it? Please indicate, I see an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So, we are now in a work session to discuss the planned unit development additional element of tree protection. How is the Board likely to proceed? Chuck Smith, are you here to come and be at the podium for questions?
Madam Mayor, can I get clarification as to how there is old business number one?
I think so. Because- Perhaps one of the ways we could start the discussion is, and I don't know who should answer this, whether it be Jeff Jones or Chuck Smith, but in the memorandum by Jeff introducing the matter tonight, he said, Jeff, that it would be, to require more coverage, more tree coverage, it could result in a rural style of movement.
Yeah, I think that was from looking at different ordinances across the state. I mean, I didn't comprehensively look at all the ordinances that I could, but I took three, including the Durham ordinance that's been modeled quite often for the Chatham Park. I took the town of Matthews and town of Davidson. And my clue on the rural development style, the larger percentage was from the Davidson ordinance that states that you get into a rural type of development, they require more percentage, but their rural type of development is closer to two acre, two acre size. And I don't think Chatham Park is proposing any two acre size limits. So, that rural area in Davidson was approximately 30%, 50% canopy coverage. And honestly, if you look across many ordinances, and just these three, they're all different. No one speaks the same language, some say canopy, some say area, and, you know, I think what Chatham Park is proposing is a tree coverage area. So, it's difficult to analyze between communities because we have different, there are different standards. But that was staff's take on at least Davidson's ordinance and requiring a more percentage from a rural standpoint.
I think we envision ourselves, I feel like we do, as a rural area and not an urban, non-urban area.
Yeah. I think that's currently how we look at ourselves, but Chatham Park has been entitled to 22,000 residential units and 22 million square feet non-residential. And I think it would be hard for us to stay mainly rural with that type of entitlements to a development. So, we're trending towards a more urban, suburban style of development from what we've seen in the master plan through the element, and then what we previewed in the small area plan that will be resubmitted sometime in the summer.
And one of your suggestions was on the last page of your memo, to lower the credit given for newly planted trees.
Yeah, so that was something that I wanted you all to consider. So, I did take a look at all the elements drafts, tree protection element drafts, from day one through where we are today. At first, there was a pretty basic tree protection element plan or discussion in the original elements that was presented to the town in 2016. There was a workshop that, there was a workshop that was held, and there was a thought to go towards Durham's model, and that's what we've been trending towards. At one time, the credit in a draft of an element was to give 200, or 1,250 square feet per tree in the replanted area. No, 1,250 square feet, I said 200, I'm sorry. 1,250 square feet per tree. That was, that was a draft that was based off of our ordinance, oh, not our draft. The Durham's ordinance came into influence Chatham Park's element, and that's where the 750 came into play. And that's what we see today. As you can see in the memo, there are differences of that, including Durham's that has a lower credit rate, or one, two and a half inch caliper tree for every 200 square feet of the area. That is taken into account those canopy trees, and one thing that the element is providing for is understory trees, and that's, that's good, and something that staff didn't truly contemplate, that was kind of focused on the canopy trees. And so, the rate at understory trees is one for every 2,000 square feet. That has changed in the, in the drafts that have come along to you, where the rate of change has decreased, rate of credit has decreased from 1,000 to 2,000 square feet. So, that's something you might want to consider talking to Chatham Park about. So, I just wanted to put out to the Board that that's probably, the percentage of coverage may be comparable, comparable to other places. What types of trees existing and newly planted in those percentage areas, whether it be 15% or 25%, might be what the crux of the position is, is how many more trees will be in that percentage area. If you did a little analysis in the memo where if it was a, from there example three, that kind of, if there was a new site that had at least point one of newly, point one of newly planted trees for every two acre, two acre site, you'd essentially be getting six new canopy trees. And if a father went today and ran the numbers, and you'd get two understory trees for that same area. Those trees would be planted along with the landscape element, and could result, it will result in more trees for, say, a two acre site. What's difficult to sort of see is, is unknown, because this is fictitious, what the existing trees look like for that particular site. So, it's hard to run a number of what existing would look like, so it's easier to say, well, what's, what's a, what new tree could be planted in their, in their examples here? And then, you know, using the same formula, I did a breakdown of what Matthews' credit might be, and then what Durham's credit might be. Matthews would be for every 256 square feet would be 17 new trees, and Durham would be 22 new trees. What I couldn't sort of get clear from the readings of those ordinances is what trees apply. Where Chatham Park has been clear that parking lot trees and street trees do not count towards the, this calculation here, those other ordinances may allow for those, those trees to be counted. So, that's, that's something to think about. I have a couple more things that I can get to after y'all debate this particular item. But those other items can wait after this, the credit issue that's discussed.
So, we want to concentrate first on the credit for newly planted trees.
And you may want to hear from Chatham Park as to why it's proposed.
Chuck, would you like to comment on why?
So, what particular issue are you talking about?
Whether to count or not count, or parking, uh, parking trees?
Oh, well, we've maintained throughout, and still maintain, we aren't trying to get credit for parking lot trees or trees within the single family lots, or a street right way.
Is his success of parking, of parking lot trees as great as it is out in the Henrylands? In other words, do they, is there a high rate of failure because of the, because they're adjacent to so much paving and all of that, or is it pretty standard, their life?
Okay, make sure I understand your, the life is, any tree is going to have a better chance to survive with more root zone. And so, the standards that we've established in parking lots, and it's similar to some of the things going on in downtown, I mean, your trees only get so big in your, where you planted them along streets downtown because you provided a certain amount of root growth area, and they have, the roots have nowhere to grow, so the tree is, is as much, the tree is not going to grow any, any larger than a certain size as it is the survival, the length of survival time. So, we've, we've put standards for, in a couple different places, primarily the landscape element that guarantees a certain amount of growth area for parking lot trees. And then, again, we're talking about something that is separate from the tree protection element. And then, Mr. Bonnet's also one of us when we were dealing with village centers, we have some urban areas where we have these connecting of root zones so that, so that roots can grow through pipes or other devices to get to other areas outside of the parking lot, or under, past the sidewalk, or things like that. So, those things, those things are also built into the landscape element to guarantee more root area for those trees that from the surface appear to have less area for the roots to grow, or for the tree to grow. So, I don't know if that's answering your question, but anyway, but just because, since tree protection is typically looking at more generally either clusters of trees or areas where trees have had opportunities to grow into forest or larger areas, we haven't tried to get credit for trees within the parking lots. And some of the confusion I think Mr. Jones is referring to when you read those other elements, those other ordinances, they get into combining landscape requirements with canopy requirements. And I agree with him, I mean, it's difficult to kind of, unless you're there using the ordinance itself, it's difficult to kind of draw any conclusions exactly where they are.
So, to clarify, you're saying that you would not count parking lot trees, street trees, residential trees, or TCA?
Yes, TCA. The only, and I've, I've shown you all some instances, but the only times we would do it in a parking lot is when we've, I think you'd like, for example, we, the individual specimen tree that's located within a parking lot that says a 15 inch tree, and then when we go to hear a request, increase the root zone area for that tree, I mean, that is trying to get credit, TCA credit just for that tree in that area. It's not a lot of credit, there won't be a lot of those situations, but that's one. Secondly, is if you went to some, had some unusual situation where you had a cluster of mature trees, and they met the TCA requirement, minimum dimension requirements of 25 feet and 1,000 square feet, that you could try to get credit for that, if it was something that the Board considered to be worthy of credit when you turned the site over.
So, instead of the 15 inch tree?
Right, in those, in those parking lot areas, in those developed areas, where you typically wouldn't see them.
That is the basis of the, or foundation of the tree element, that there's a lower percentage of trees required of the existing trees, and there's penalties for cutting down, acquiring a greater percentage, and placing back.
So, but without, I can take your comments, I know there were, there were a couple of questions that were posted to me previously that I will address sometime during this time, but short of that, I was going to wait for your comments and address those.
So, I do have a question. So, let me have a large specimen tree in a parking area, it counts as part of the TCA. When that tree dies, then what? Is that replaced? Is replaced with a more than one, you know, according to the codes of the region, or that, that would be replaced?
Yeah, usually, you know, usually, it is definitely replaced. It's, and the way I've seen it addressed has been that if, if it was, let's say, a 36 inch tree, you can't replace a 36 inch tree easily, and so you would take those caliper inches and distribute those inches of tree caliper within the site.
Is that, is that in the element?
It's not in the TCA element, no.
So, how would we know that would happen?
Uh, there's some, there's some language in the, in the landscape element about replacing trees that die, but I'm not sure if it gets to that detail, I'm not positive by my own own.
Can we see that that gets in the element?
So, that's-
Is that just with respect to existing trees or newly included trees?
I guess I'm concerned, like, if we move specimen trees, or significant clusters of mature trees, how those trees, when they are no longer with us, what will, what happens? And it sounds like you have something in mind, but it's just, it's not that it's included in, and I think what you said is very nice, I like that, I'd like to see it.
I have a question in reference to section three, no, I'm sorry, section four. Little leaf, bike plant and subdivisor plant, the lapback for 10,000 square feet.
Section four.
Section four.
I mean, I know the one we were talking about was Chatham Park. Oh, okay.
Under the table.
I got under three. Yeah, it's under, it's note number three.
It's under three.
Note number three under the table.
Three D, I got paying five.
Right. Where did we come up with 10,000? Is that your question?
Yeah, and I can-
Okay, we, we addressed this once before, but I don't remember if everyone was here. What we have found from our experience is that the, generally where we were with lots, and needing to clear them without being able to save trees because of everything that was fitting up a lot, when you didn't have, when you didn't have tow boats around 8,000 feet, when we went to the tow boat considerations that were here, when we've been dealing with development in this county where it is greater slope, that's about a 9,000 square foot lot. Now, where we get, got to the 10 was that, it takes us about 1,000 square feet to deal with drainage going from, from lot to lot. And we had talked about, I think, I mentioned this before, and y'all confirmed that, that you've had a few situations of neighborhoods that have, or development that has been here where they, people have come in and registered concern about drainage coming from uphill down through their development, wanting to make sure that was taken care of. And so, this is doing, this is taking care of that drainage on a lot by lot basis between lots, primarily, sometimes it's in the rear lots, but usually it's dealing with what's coming, with swales between lots, to make sure that the lot where the water falls is picking up that drainage and taking it to the street or taking it somewhere else so that it doesn't get to the downhill lot. And so, that's where we came up with that number two, primarily accounting for that, for that drainage.
I don't know what that would give you.
And you have to clear to build those swales.
But if you reduce it to 7,000 square feet, tell me what the effect would get, get that out.
Well, it's the same effect. What we're saying is, is that once you, once you pass 10, then you're able to do the, all those things I just talked about without clearing the entire lot. Once, when you're 10 and below, that's when you start, you're, you're clearing the lot when you take care of, okay, the building pad, the driveway, the deck, or, you know, a backyard place space, swales for the drainage. And so, it was at that, at that 10,000 square foot threshold where you could take care of it without then having to clear everything on the lot.
So, it'd be necessary to have that much to take care of, would you think?
Right.
Chuck, while you're on that, and I know I've had several questions about this, the TCPA, is that, when that comes into effect, is in the residential, clear the lots?
Yes, sir. Well, it's not so much the clearing of lots that TCPA is dealing with. TCPA is just as, and I, this, I mean, we're calling it TCPA, other ordinances just don't put that label on it, but they're doing the same thing. I mean, you're, since you can't get credit without a residential subdivision for the trees on the lots, then you've got to have a common area within your planning area, or that subdivision area that is outside of the lots, but it's within the subdivision. And so, we chose to call it TCPA. You can call it any number of things, but the single family residential neighborhood is one place that occurs. We also put it, that possibility on the village center. We're calculating-
Now, how would, since you said, how would that area be? How would you know how much TCPA area would need, by the site plan?
Right, well, first of all, you take the, let's, just for example, for illustrative purposes, there's 100 acres in the subdivision. And then, if there's a 20% requirement on that subdivision, then you've got, if it's, if it's existing trees that you're saving, then you've got 20 acres of that 100 acres that would be in existing trees. If, as Mr. Bonnet noted earlier, if you didn't have 20 acres of trees, and that percentage required goes up because you're, you're then planting new trees to meet that percentage. But it starts with that calculation of what is the, it's the area within your planning, within your neighborhood.
So, it could more or less be a cluster, it could be like one or two lots just saved just for tree protection, correct?
Yeah, a lot might, some people might not refer to that as a lot, I think, so- Yes, or, well, it's not so much the clearing of lots that TCPA is dealing with. TCPA is just as, and I, this, I mean, we're calling it TCPA, other ordinances just don't put that label on it, but they're doing the same thing. I mean, you're, since you can't get credit without a residential subdivision for the trees on the lots, then you've got to have common area within your planning area or that subdivision area that is outside of the lots, but it's within the subdivision. And so, we chose to call it TCPA, you can call it any number of things, but the single-family residential neighborhood is one place that occurs. We also put it, that possibility on the village center. We're calculating...
Now, how would, since you said, how would that area be, how would you know how much TCPA area would need? By a site plan?
Right, well, first of all, you take the, let's, just for example, for illustrative purposes, there's 100 acres in the subdivision, and then if there's a 20% requirement on that subdivision, then you've got, if it's, if it's existing trees that you're saving, then you've got 20 acres of that 100 acres that would be in existing trees. If, as Mr. Jones noted earlier, if you didn't have 20 acres of trees, then that percentage required goes up because you're, you're then planting new trees to meet that percentage. But it starts with that calculation of what is the, it's the area within your planning, within your neighborhood.
So it could more or less be a cluster, it could be like, one or two lots just saved just for tree protection, correct?
Yeah, a lot might, some people might not refer to that as a lot, I think, so maybe a little legal, from a legal definition standpoint, it could be called a lot, would be called a lot. But, it is, it's going to vary in situations depending on what you have in that neighborhood. It could be one area, one lot, that's 20 acres of trees. It could be four areas or lots that are 5 acres each, and so on until you get to that 20 acres.
So particularly...
And it's also, let me say this too, this is in a vacuum, it's adjacent to other neighborhoods that have their own, and usually, just from, from just the way we, when, thus, when we've done it to this point, that, that boundary line is generally going to, to center out of the stream. And so, it's going to, it's going to be adjacent to other TCPA's that will have their own clusters, so you'll have adjacent clusters that make larger areas than that, but it, but it would be on a, a case, it's just sort of go phase by phase or development by development through the, through the project. So makes, does that make sense?
So that, yeah, you're pretty much, but that would not include any buffers, string buffers or anything, that would not be included in the TCPA?
No, string buffers are allowed to be within TCPA, yes.
Is it fair to say then that the TCPA allows you all more flexibility by allowing you to move the requisite number of trees to different areas within a particular, larger lot?
Well, when you say more flexibility, then what?
I'll take one.
Well, right, but then how would you, I'm not, this is not, I'm not, this isn't being an argument, because I think the other, the other examples we're, again, we're comparing to are doing the exact same thing, so if you, well, how'd you put it, Mr. Jones, if you did call it a TCPA, what, I don't, I can't remember what you just said.
Yeah, we didn't have it...
Right, so how, so then, if you've got a residential subdivision, how would you calculate the percentages required? And you can't use area, again, we're saying you're not using area within the lots themselves, these, the residential lots, for that calculation.
So, in Shadow Forest, there are public areas, I don't know what their legal designation is in the context of this conversation, but they are outside of the homeowner's property lines, and they protect the trees, and they're often on ridge lines and other unbuildable spaces, and they're associated with the houses there, and in fact, in some cases, the trees, tree coverage area, I think it would be, in this context, does overlap onto the property of the adjacent homeowner, or that common area, as it's called in Shadow Forest. And again, we've heard no problems with the HFW having restrictions on maintenance of those trees.
And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, I'm agreeing completely with what you just said as the process, that's what we would be doing too.
Well, I, I don't see that, I don't see that the TCPA is going to be immediately adjacent, in fact, I looked for that language, Chuck, because I thought that we had an agreement that you'd be including language without adjacency in your example, I remember during workshops, you were standing up here to explain that it would be adjacent.
That is absolutely the intent, so that was one of your examples of something where we...
Major heartburn for each other.
Yeah, if it's not there, I mean, I'll, I'll make sure it goes...
I appreciate that.
I'm going to look while we're talking, because I keep thinking it is.
I have a little bit of TCPA as well, but TCPA is not TCA.
Right.
Tree coverage area is what we're trying to get at. So, in this example, John, Shadow Forest, the original boundary of the lot, which was then subdivided, and roads were built, and lots were created, the remainder of that area would be TCA. So you've got streets, lots, TCA, those things comprise the TCPA, the tree coverage planning area. So TCA is always within the TCPA, is, does there need more adjacent language? It's always TCA, or that property is always within the TCPA. Well, I think there's a need for that language, because there's members of the board who are concerned about a situation where a lot may be placed right next to a highway bypass and an overpass, and there's no tree coverage outside of the federally protected stream buffer, and so we might see TCPA a mile away.
Can I, can I point you to a language, page two, section two, number five, tree coverage planning area? It's defined as an area of land that contains any one of the following development types together with the existing trees needed to satisfy the TCA requirements. So what that's saying is, you've got these development types, which are single-family development, in this case we're talking about, and within the TCPA, you've got the single-family development plus the TCA, the tree coverage areas, needed to satisfy the requirements for those single-family lots, and it's got to be within the TCPA, as defined in this number five.
I don't, I still don't understand how that fits us to any kind of constraint on where TCPA can, can be delineated. I, I don't see how that, that couldn't allow a tract that has so many stream buffers that it's essentially unbuildable to be designated as TCPA for other lots that are to be mass graded a mile away.
We would, we would have to define that mile as the planning, the TCPA for those lots, because those stream buffers, if they were meeting it, would, that to, that are trying to meet the TCA requirements for those lots, would have to be within that line, that meets and bounds description defining that area.
And that area would then define the percentage of which you'd...
Right, if that area keeps growing to 50 square miles, then you've got that much more TCA that's required to be provided.
Where it meets and bounds?
Well, but that's when you do a plan, it's, it's defined as an area of land, how do you determine that area of land? You, on a, on a plan that is submitted to the town, and we talk about that in here with development plans, it's either site plans or subdivision plans, we have to provide what the boundary of that, what the boundary of that plan is. We've got to do it because of stormwater requirements, we already laid out in the stormwater element, and we've got to do it because of open, we've got a number of requirements here that take you to the point of having to define these land areas when you submit various plans.
Maybe this is just far too clever for me to wrap my head around, Chuck, but I, I don't understand how this constrains future assignees from doing what I've just suggested, that there's some lot, very far, long distance away, that it's essentially unbuildable because there's also stream buffers being designated as the, as the, the area for a lot which has houses on it, but really ought to have some native trees nearby, native, natural, not replanted, not new trees, pertaining to trees. I don't understand how we get that prescription out of the language that we've got.
I'm, I'm not sure I can make you understand it, because it's written right there.
Let's use adjacent. It's within, it can't be adjacent if it's within. That lot you refer to must be connected to the houses you also refer to, and encompassed by... No, that's, that's not what I'm seeing. What are reading? Well, it says a TCPA includes the development and the trees, therefore, if you have TCA outside of the TCPA, it must be assigned to either a commercial lot, a multifamily development, or some other TCPA. So is it a, is it a 500 acre TCPA? Is it a, is it a 50 acre UCPA? You could have either. I think it's highly unlikely to have a 500 acre TCPA because of the time limits on our site plans in order to build something, it would probably, the development would expire in its entitlement before you develop the 500 acres. How to get the vineyards, plus the, I think that's, what's it called, area one?
Just about 500 lots, what's, Robbie, you remember the acreage, 275 acre?
I saw two on the...
Just, just 250, 275, something like that.
Does that include window?
Uh, window, the street?
Yes, and the lots and the...
Right, it includes every, if, if this...
Just want to make sure we're talking about the same area.
Yeah, if this was the boundary of that area, everything within that, includes those streets, includes those lots, includes the TCA meeting that. We couldn't have something sitting over here, TCA-wise, tree-wise, to meet this, or we couldn't have lots over here that need some TCA and they draw from this.
The other things within that sheet of paper are parks, wet, greenways, open space, stormwater management choices, conceivably in the future, school sites, fire department sites, how that could be included in a TCPA. But for the school site and the fire department, those have TCA on their...
They would, they would have standalone.
And again, subject to certain, well, subject to different standards, because they would not be residential, so they would be held to different standards.
I'm not sure I still understand, however, the reason I used the word flexibility was, for example, in your sales office, it is a suitable for later seat. You have a 10 acre lot, which will contain your sales office, and the only trees that I see on that are, for example, along a, a, a buffer of, they are concentrated along one side of the, of the lot as a buffer along the stream, or flow net. So, can you articulate for me why it is that you have chosen to do that? Because to me, it just cries out that if you, if, if I was going to your sales office, I would love for that sales office to be surrounded by really nice trees. And, and I, when I look at it, and see the starpens out of it, and see the strip over here, it makes me think that that's the kind of flexibility that means that there doesn't have to be true tree coverage, it can be flexed out in, in and along that, I'll give you the numbers that you need, could you speak to that?
I, I can, I can speak to it, it may not, I think I understand what you're talking about. One of the, there are a few things going on that site that makes a little difference. One is, we aren't sure, there's going to be some point in time where we will not always need that welcome center, and it's going to, that the evolution of development of that site is going to get to a hotel or an office building or something that's more, higher and better use at that intersection. And so, we've, we've always looked at that as a temporary placeholder until that, that larger use occurs. Now, there are a number of areas of trees that are on that particular drawing you're talking about, that are not shown as tree saved yet, because we've got, for example, all along, we, we talked about this earlier today, all along Highway 64 bypass, we've got a requirement for the landscape element that we will save trees, we will provide trees along that corridor. That was not shown as colored green, I think, on that drawing that you've got, because it wasn't trying to make or meet the, or be used as the requirement for this, for the welcome center. You, you could have extended just the welcome center boundary to that point and used trees there, but because of that, again, flexibility may be a word, but it's more not knowing what the ultimate use is going to be at that site, of the rest of that site. So, that was, that's part of that answer, I don't know if they're completely, because there are, besides the two, besides the area you referred to, besides along 64, there are other areas in there that will have trees that just haven't been shown yet, because they didn't need to be shown to meet the requirement.
I see, so, so is there, the fact that that site plan is blank except for...
Right, there's a lot of blank on that plan, that's right.
It just, so that doesn't mean that you're going to go in and clear it, it means that you're going to go in and...
Well, some of that site, you're right, some of, some of the site that, the force of the site that's already been cleared was due to the construction of Channel Parkway, and needing to either pull material in for filling low areas or providing stockpile areas, so that, that site has been, forget the welcome center plan, that site had been cleared, it had a stockpile of dirt, and after that dirt was removed, it was graded back to, so water would drain properly off of that site. But the trees along 64 are still there, the trees along, and other forces of that site are still there that are not reflected on that drawing. And I think when we came in with phase one of the vineyard, for example, we were showing, and Jeff, Mr. Jones, and Robbie and I have talked about this a number of times, but when you come in, let's say, we did have a 275 acre development, this is before this, we had completely developed this element to the point of understanding a lot of these things, but we, we turned in the first 50 acres of that, well, that's showing then the next 200 acres being completely wooded, does that mean that that's all TCA forever? No, it just means it hadn't been defined yet on the complete build-out of that area. So I think this, where the welcome center is just showing, here's a, here's an area of the site we know will meet the requirements when the rest of that site builds out, this is, it'll look different from a development standpoint within the area that's already been cleared and graded, and from a site, you'll, you'll get site plans, a site plan or, or site plans that define what those requirements are, define what those improvements are, and define what the TCA is and so forth.
Correctly, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm naive, but to me, it seems like this is a good thing, because in terms of, say, the trees along stream buffers, which creates wildlife or, or, I personally would rather see clusters of trees saved, which becomes more like a forest, and not having isolated trees here and there, I like the idea that there are more than be clusters of trees that will become more like a true forest, and, and I'll be naive, but that's, that's why I like that.
Well, I, I personally, I mean, I think you're asking the rest of your colleagues, I personally agree with that, because we've considered the next most, to the riparian buffers, we've considered the next most important areas, the land adjacent to the riparian buffers, because that neither gives you a wider, it gives you a wider buffer corridor, one for, for the treatment of stormwater before it gets into that stream, but also gives you wider wildlife habitat and borders. Now, some, some municipalities will give priority of where they want to see trees, and they list just what you said as a higher priority. I think your proposed UDO didn't have that as high up on that priority list, so, and that's one of the things to be talked about in the future, and that, but I mean, I personally, personally agree with what you just said.
I'd rather see tips in some areas, and your streams and rivers actually have clusters of real, real forest.
Well, I, I don't think that, that the, my intent with expressing my concerns about what appears to be excess, excess flexibility in the TCPA, is not anyway to diminish the goal of containing larger sets of clusters of trees. But, to go back to Mayor Perry's example, I think it's a very good one, because it's, I mean, right out of the gate, the, the information center is, is, Chuck, our investor stalls it, it is striking, Chuck, and, and so I'd like you to talk to us about that particular tract, the fact that there's already been some clearing done for staging for the construction of a, important... already been some clearing done for staging for the construction of the important overpass, over bypass. Probably staging for Chatham Parkway's construction. But how much of that lot outside of the buffer has been cleared?
I may get the point here wrong. I can't, I can't do that.
Okay. Or is there a question?
I don't know if this is talking about anybody. For example, none of this is been cleared, none of this has been cleared. We consider putting the welcome center there. None of that has been cleared. That hasn't been cleared. This was cleared for the construction of the roads. This area along 64 is not been cleared. These areas have not been cleared. So again, this is looking at that point in time where this would be developed as one site. And so we weren't going to go try to commit to say, I mean, clearing levels, you see, is that dashed line right there? We don't know that. And that's the requirement from the landscape office, so that, where that line is. So I can't tell you today if it's going to clear that or not, whether we ultimately put whatever is there. So that's one of the reasons they stayed away from trying to commit to something here. They didn't know what was going to be here. They knew this, and again, this, this could be, green leaves is going to remain as TCA, so there's no question about that. These other areas, there will be green areas within those. We discussed another issue, the winterhead site.
So the? So this entire thing is not the site plan? This is only the site plan?
And that's all you're, that's all you're considering?
Tonight?
I think, well, I think there's probably some property line that goes through there, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to represent this plan. Somebody else can be doing that. Okay, I'll get through it.
Fair enough. Big project.
A lot of players, yeah, I got a few things to remember.
But it is striking that there was no tree survey attached to this site plan stage. And?
Well, again, a lot of this has been done before. We still don't know what the element is.
But site plans have been presented previously with?
We certainly do it different every time we do it because we found a?
Well, it feels like that kind of?
What I'm saying, it feels like that?
No, 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 just, just that, that we see another site plan without a tree survey. That, that, that feels not like progress.
Well, again, this was done before we came up with that language of pre-sampling areas and all those things. I think we provided information from earlier iterations of this. I'll be happy when we get to a point where we have a fixed line that we're all looking at.
It's now seven o'clock. How does the board want to proceed? Do you want to go to our regular agenda and pick this up as item number one of old business?
So I'm, so just so I understand what we're doing, well, admittedly, I'm not clear. We're, we're closing the work session, going to the, your regular meeting, and then we come back at 10 o'clock or whenever, when old business comes, or is it earlier in the?
It's earlier.
Okay. Because I don't have a?
We'll just pick up the question.
Okay, so I, I got you. We're also on the, I understand. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. We need a motion to go out of our work session and need to bring your agenda. Okay. I have a question. John, I have a statement motion, third second, Gerald P. Simpson, three, I think she's going to check. Thank you. So in favor, please, may I? All right. Motion carries. As to the consent agenda, we're going to have call for action on the consent agenda. Is, are there any modifications or any changes to the consent agenda, which consists of eight items? Very good. Goodbye, Michael Fierca, second to that welcome forward. To, is that to approve the consent agenda itself or to the consent agenda as a? It's a good group, so it's okay, I think. So in favor, please, in time.
I know.
So, so motion carries. All right. So now we are at the moment of having a public press conference speaker. Citizens of Matters, the tribe we live, there are five people who signed up to speak tonight. And all but one of them are speaking on the matters that are on the agenda. We have in the past, done a sort of check in, and we want to hear from all people who are driving to one of the matters on the agenda. Anything to say there?
Yes.
Would you make that motion?
I'll make a motion to listen to the speaker for a maximum three minutes. Proceed.
Say it. Goodbye, Jay Farrell, second to that welcome forward. So in favor, please, can you give us an aye? And that's a aye. First vote. Motion carries. Ron Hatley, you are our first speaker. If you'll come to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Ron Hatley. I live at 24 Roy Hatley Road. As Jeff had mentioned earlier, we are and have been considered more of a rural area. As all good stories start once upon a time, I was the business manager for the Pittsboro High School yearbook. And in that position, it was my job to go around and ask different businesses in the, in the county to help us support our yearbook. And those of you of a certain age may remember and smile at the Thiessen's Clinic, at Justice Motors, the Ford Motor Company by Cooper Harris, Thomas Brothers Furniture Company, and Arthur's Men's Store. The one thing they all have in common, they are no longer with us. I come before you tonight because as a rural area, as a people concern, it bothers me, the education I have, that I have trouble understanding some of the things that you are making decisions on. They're very complex. They're very detailed. I can't understand why the stormwater provision would require a password. Why is that not something that's available to our public? Recently, we were considered by Business Journal in the state of North Carolina as CARRY 2.0. That frightens me. It frightened me a great deal. I'm afraid that sometimes the developers feel that we're being very adversarial. I spoke to the group one time before. I'm not sure if the developers were here, but that is not our intent to be adversarial. Last Friday, a group of individuals got together at the courthouse to speak for tree protection. And as people drove around the courthouse blowing their horns and doing films up, I'm not speaking for tree protection myself. And I'm not speaking for tree protection for those people driving around. I'm speaking for the children that were in the car seats of those cars. As elected officials, the gentleman that signed that Declaration of Independence, those individuals, many lost their lives, they all lost their incomes. And as elected officials for us, I appreciate your taking all these matters at heart. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Elaine Kierca.
Good evening. I wanted to just take a moment for us to remember Barbara Lory, who died last week at 93. She lived a long, wonderful life, but she was a really important person in Pittsboro and Chatham County. She retired to Pittsboro in the mid 1980s and immediately became part of all decisions that were being made about Pittsboro and contributing to everything. Friends of the Library, helping us get recycling centers built in Chatham County. The list goes on and on. She worked for social equity and against racism. We're all going to miss her a lot in Chatham County. And, and she had a big regret at the end of her life as she started becoming more infirm, that she couldn't be part of this fight to try to get Chatham Park to be more environmentally responsible. And it kind of broke her heart that, you know, I love that she would have enjoyed seeing a four and five hour long meetings, but she would have liked to have been here to, to be part of this. So, you know, we carry on. We aren't going to stop. We're, we're carrying on for Barbara and she certainly was one of my mentors. And we know that we are on the right side. These are 21st century decisions you're making, not 20th century. We don't need more sprawl. What are we going to do with big box stores that are now closing down all around us? Retail is not the future anymore. The need for clean water is only going to be greater as the world becomes increasingly in trouble. Trees are going to be worth so much more than they have ever been for the shade, for their oxygen, for, you know, storing carbon, on, you know, on and on. And, and yes, you know, for keeping us from being flooded. I, I know you want to do the right thing. I would say you're being intentionally confused by Chatham Park and these decisions that you're trying to make. It's incredibly difficult language to understand. I've heard the word, you know, word salad used for some of what, what they say. And my heart's go out to you because I spent countless hours trying to figure out exactly what they're trying to say. And I would say that the tree coverage protection area is a bunch of food. I mean, it is just not what they're saying it is. And you've brought up all the right questions about it. I'll just end by saying, I know that when future generations ask me, what did you do to try and stop what our world is becoming? I can say that I stood for the trees and that I stood up for clean water. And, you know, I need you to think about what you're going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brooks Ramey Pearson?
I scribbled a little, I'm sorry.
Okay. What's your first name?
Brooks.
Okay.
I'm Brooks Ramey Pearson with the Southern Environmental Law Center. I'm a staff attorney there. And I came tonight to talk about Public Records Act and the settlement agreement, which is the last item on your agenda. But as I sit here tonight and listen to the discussion of the tree ordinance, I thought I could even speak more broadly about transparency. I have a degree in city planning and I have a law degree. And one of my roles with SCLC is a lobbyist and I draft legislation and ordinances. And I've really never seen anything like this, where someone will bring forth an ordinance for adoption and it doesn't make sense even to the elected body, can't agree on what it means. And rather than saying, well, that must be poorly drafted. Let's redraft that in a way that it makes clear what we mean so that no one's confused by it. Instead, there's talking and talking into circles until everyone's just confused into submission and you move on to the next topic. To me, that seems like a really poor way to make policy. And I would urge you, when it doesn't make sense and you can't agree on what it means, to ask the drafters to redraft it. And, and if they're sincere in their expressions, then they would have no problem with drafting it, to say what they said it, what they say it means, to read how they say it. But, you're welcome. With that lecture over, when you get to the settlement agreement, on page four, section B and C, we're glad to see this online tracking system for stormwater. That's a great nod to transparency. And so you see that it is protected by user login and password. And when you read the items that are included on this list, you know, the location of the stormwater management and the design volume and the appurvious surface, it makes you wonder why we would need to hide that information from the citizens of the town. And unless there is, and I thought today, would there be social security numbers on there? Would there be trade secret? And I can't think of any reason that stormwater plans would need to be password protected. And it seems to me that if we're doing this new thing, this point system, that nobody knows, I mean, the people at VQ are, their brains are exploding over this because they don't know what this is going to look like on the ground. And we haven't gotten a good example of, well, here, let's take this real life plot and I'll show you what it would look like on the ground. We haven't seen that from Chatham Park. So if we're going to try this brand new thing that we don't know what it's going to look like, then let's have all the information out there for everyone to see. Because several times in this, they say, except as provided by law, North Carolina General Statute, section 132 dash one. Well, that's the Public Records Act. Because all of this is public record. And that just means that I'm going to have to have an intern whose basically full time job is to request every single thing that goes on this website, which is silly, when instead this should just be information that is available to the public. I urge you to consider that when considering the settlement agreement. It's great that they want to provide that information. It's a little sketchy that they want to hide it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Maya Krueger.
Hi, I live on Jeremiah Drive in North Towne County. And we have been experiencing serious flooding from the lake for the last, well, since September and hurricanes. And with current increase in rain, it's been a major problem. We haven't been able to have timely assistance from emergency services. We're not in Pittsboro. We're up a quarter of a mile from the lake. But we've been having this flooding from essentially the lake going into our creek. And this kind of flooding is going to only increase. And with more hardscape, it's going to only increase. And if we don't have adequate protection along the Hall River, which flows into the lake, it's only going to increase. And with the last rains, when we were flooded, and I was driving, 87 was also flooded. And there were other areas along Chatham County that were also flooded. We have to have adequate riparian buffers. We have to have enough trees and enough plantings and enough chorus ground to prevent runoff. During the hurricane, my grand niece and nephew were out of school because of inability of the buses to get to Pittsboro Elementary School because the road was washed out. Again, this is only going to increase to say, well, there was an ordinance, this historical ordinance that we're following. We have to look at the future. And the fact is, is that the current plan does not provide for an adequate riparian buffer along the Hall. Now, the other issue, of course, is the problem of contamination of the Hall. And I also am on a monitoring team that monitors the Hall, and I want you to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. And then Scotty. And then Scotty.
Hi, I'm even less apparent than usual. I'm not going to talk about the tree element because I've been writing you and emailing you and all the rest of it. And so I kind of given up on trying to influence you. However, there are three things that concern me that are kind of courageous in this. And I really appreciated what Brooks said because the tree element and the stormwater, well, stormwater situation are, they couldn't be more confusing. And in particular, the tree element still being not quite passed. All you got was a new definition, which was similar to the old definition. Anyway, the things that I wanted to talk to that are a little bit larger are, at the planning board meeting last week, after the meeting, I talked to the planning board members, almost all of them are in a huddle, and I got all these different, I asked them why they didn't ask about this peculiar tree coverage arrangement where the tree coverage is actually on a different site, not on the 10 acres of the visitor center site. And I got four different answers, all of which were wrong. And some people had ideas which were wrong, which actually conflicted with one another. So the planning board essentially is getting applications, but they're not getting updated versions of the elements. They don't know whether they apply, when they apply, or what is supposed to be applied. Therefore, you essentially, in many respects, don't always have a planning board. You just have a planning staff and whatever they think. And so this, you don't have that check and balance. The other thing is that I would really urge you to get copies of the small area plan review process. Because you pass that before, it turned out that it would be for a larger area, less definite and more extended into the future, not really what was anticipated. And I really, I really believe that the process you set up, it's much more similar to a 500 acre phase subdivision plan than it is for a small area plan for the Hall, North Village. To cut me off, I'd like to talk about the agreement. I don't believe that you need to pass it tonight, but I think Brooks probably knows more about that than I do. Anyway, the agreement was made for the board, but without the board ever being involved from start to finish until this point. The requirements regarding stormwater strike me as being different than they are in the stormwater element. And it also seems to me that less information would be provided, even less information than before, would be provided to the town stormwater administration, for particular administrator, for particular development applications.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam.
Thanks for letting us speak.
Anyway. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is the commissioners and managers of the city. During this period of time, we talked about things that we have done to the community since the last meeting. We all enjoyed a joint meeting with the county on the 9th May. We would have discussed various issues, including Chatham Park Utilities and other matters of concern. And hopefully, we'll be working together more and doing a collaboration to respect some of these issues that can be, that can be mitigated by that kind of thing. So, we have in front of us the update by the manager and, as I respect, we can go over. Um, update to...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be efficient. Town Hall regarding the Newtown Hall project, staff met with the Chatham County Health Department, both Board of Elections and County Managers. We follow with the Health Department and Board of Elections. The two departments, at this point, were looking to co-locate in the Newtown Hall project. So, I think that's one of the great examples of collaboration that Mayor Perry just mentioned. Our collaboration on that will be critical to moving that process forward. So we've got to get back and forth on that, how the building internally is designed, how it operates externally, specifically in terms of, even for example, in terms of Board of Elections, and how the public would access the building.
Can you speak up, please?
Good stuff there.
Are you two paying? I just wanted to talk over.
Yeah. Hobbs Art Pex presented to the Chatham County Board on this, as Mayor Perry just mentioned. And there was some additional feedback with the Chatham County Board on that date as well. Feedback, I think the Hobbs can take back and incorporate some of their work as we move forward. You'll see in the picture, on the site, where the Newtown Hall is going to be located, there were a few curb stops that were placed there onsite. Staff painted some lines and some directional arrows and things to kind of make it a little bit, the parking area a little bit more organized. We may need to look at some signage as far as, you know, looking at hours of parking and things of that nature, but nothing on wood so far, so good. Hobbs has completed the schematic design report and will be looking for some board feedback on that. There's a couple of pieces too that, there's a couple of pieces too that we'll be looking for some board input on, that being audio digital system and the board chambers, and doing what Taylor Hobbs calls a lead kickoff design meeting. So those will be upcoming, and we'll get more word out about that as well. Finally, with regards to Town Hall, we met with Davenport Associates, who is working as our financial advisor. They're currently developing the financing schedule and presenting some possible options and a little toward presenting that as well. Upcoming meetings, May 20th, you have the UDO workshop at 6:00 PM at Town Hall. I think the last one was postponed. Is that postponed in favor of tree protection workshop? So we'll be moving forward on the UDO workshop on May 20th at 6:00 PM. And also too, in this, you'll see on this lower right-hand corner, a picture of Waste Industries, a truck that operations will be rebranded from Waste Industries to GFL Environmental. And I had a very good conversation with Bill Davidson, who's our staff contact, the Waste Industries about that. I think over the next few months, year, we'll be looking at trucks that are newer than 2015, painted green and rebranded as we kind of see here. The older trucks will receive new stickers, but will probably remain green. They're not expecting any interruption in service. And the commercial containers that will be distributed will receive new stickers with that GFL logo, the ECM there as well. So, good news on that. Finally, a couple brief items. Pittsburgh Elementary School Road Bridge, as you recall, previously updated the board on related issue with the flood plain and the flood plain reporting on that as we begin our redesign for replacing the culvert with a larger culvert, culvert that's better able to handle stormwater. That clover process, as we indicated, will take a couple of extra months to complete. So in the meantime, we went ahead and opened the road in terms of putting the existing sized culvert down, adding more fill underneath the vitunist, you can see here, and then adding what's called concrete rip ramp on the banks to kind of stabilize that in interim. These preformed blocks here along the side act as the new head wall. By all appearances, it's pretty sturdy. We've got some compliments on how it's operating thus far. But again, this is a solution, I think, that will get us through the next few months. Our hope is, and Elizabeth will go ahead and throw something at me here at the long days, but our hope is to have that project moving forward this fall, with population by the end of the year. So, the important thing now is to keep that open for safety, safety and school reasons. And Mayor Perry too, had asked me once upon a time about the walkway. And this, again, this walkway is just temporary. It'll be an extension of the Guinness sidewalk to the curb, I guess they call it, the little dirt there in the new structure. So that's not, it's not something that's going to fall by the wayside.
Will the ride actually close again in the future, maybe put the culvert in, or is it open for students?
Yeah, I don't see any way around keeping it open.
Yeah.
I think it'll be a couple of months in the winter in order to do the construction, but we will...
When are you going to be opening up that surface?
We're in the process to get this little one approved, so we're still in that stage, but I think it's all finished.
And then, yeah, I was going to show you another, actually I had another slide that I'll just skip by that, but it was kind of interesting. Someone reported to me an article from 1995 about the previous washout of the road. And it was kind of interesting seeing how it was, it all sounded familiar. And I can, I can say, and I don't, I don't, this isn't something I necessarily wanted to accomplish, but the article mentioned that the road was replaced at $60,000 and we did this replacement at $20,000. Now, the, obviously the larger culvert structure and that's going to be considered more, so that's true. Bicycle and pedestrian plan, open house this Thursday, May 16th, 4:30 to 6:00 PM at the library. I don't know if Jeff has any opinions about that, but...
How will that be exactly?
Folks come in and get audible with our public...
It's not a presentation of the plan, it's not a chance to get info.
And then, just real quick, we have the Chatham, as I indicated, our joint meeting with the county board the other day. We do have our joint Chatham County Water and Sewer Master Plan report completed by Hayes and Sawyer. Staff had a meeting with them a week or so ago. We'll be looking forward with Hayes and Sawyer to present something to the board on that soon. And C.E.M. Smith continues to work on the unregulated chemicals piece and the overall report in terms of feasibility for the water treatment plant, our current water treatment plant. And we'll have more report on that soon. And with that, I will tap off. If you have any other questions or concerns, let me know.
Thank you. Add to other organizations and meetings that the board may have attended, the EDC or the PBA? Triangle J, any other reports?
Well, I'm happy to report on Main Street. I was unable to attend the last PBA meeting. I had a field contest, so I'll follow what happened there. But Main Street, we have been working on facade grants for quite some time. I'm happy to say, I think, for select gates have opened. We are entertaining 11 facade grants right now and possibly three more. There's a big event this Sunday called the Photo on Main. It is our dining opportunity downtown, and that will start Sunday at 5:00 PM. And associated with that is a really, I think, exciting project, and that is our camp rails downtown. I think they've been equipped with the art components. No peeking, but they will be unveiled Sunday evening, right before dinner. So please come join in the feast.
And as I said this afternoon, there were only 40 tickets left.
Any reports? Yeah, okay. All right. In a bar, one too old, isn't it? The first which is our tree.
Could we enlighten Mr. Nass standing in the back of the room, which I assume would be a very brief presentation, perhaps a big frog, a PB, Pittsburgh AC update required for the Chatham Park tree element?
I think we're trying, just before he say on that. We arranged the agenda and have him to know. So, John Bond, taken by Michael Fierro. Does he have a...
All right.
Jim, would you want to agree?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. Appreciate it very much. I just want to give you an update on ABC operation here in Pittsburgh. So far this year, we're up on revenues, $120,000, where we were last year at this time. And our total cost of sales, as a percentage of our total sales, is actually down, which is good news. Our net income is up a significant amount, almost $30,000 where it was last year. So that's taking all expenses, what we pay, the ways that we pay for our utilities, we pay for the liquor we sell, and so on. So that's all quite good news. I think I told you the last time I was here that the, we were a little concerned about mixed beverage sales starting to even out. Well, they've turned around rather considerably. So we are again significantly over last year. So that was a flip in the road, and that's good news all the way around, but that's true. But the really good news is that I have money to distribute to tonight in the amount of $12,000, let me guess, $12,923. So that, we are much ahead of last year on distributions already. We still have the fourth quarter to go. And then, as is traditional, we will be coming to you in the first quarter of next year and asking you to approve the kind of split that we've had for the last several years in terms of the amount of money that we're over, the amount we can keep without your approval. So I'd be glad to take any questions or comments or anything of that matter on behalf of the ABC Board and get back to them at our next meeting, if you have any.
Questions for Jim?
Comments? Thank you for our continued sit-ups.
Yes. Well, thank you all for your support. And Madam Mayor, I'll put these checks to you now.
Thank you, guys. All right, maybe then go to our tree. And, um, let's see. I guess one of the things that seems logical is, you had indicated after we discussed the credit, that you have some other items of interest to talk to.
If you feel like I've gotten that taken care of, we can move to some other observations.
I'm not sure that we have, but...
But I can throw them out on the table for you to consider. So, we want, we want to take a look at how the interplay between the landscape, landscape element and tree protection element works, because we understand that both provide the trees and those are going to provide for more trees in new sites. I think there is a little bit, a little bit of things to consider between the landscape element and the tree protection element. The landscape element catches canopy trees at 30 feet of maturity, whereas prior landscape element drafts went all the way up into 50, 60, 70 feet in height. So what we're talking about is substantial trees being planted or not planted in the case of the landscape element, because the maturity of tree is, a canopy tree can be mature at 30 feet in height. There could be a consideration from you all to have a discussion with Chatham Park about these newly planted canopy trees that qualify for tree protection, being something else other than 30 feet in height at maturity, something 40 to 60 range, because if the idea is to create more shade for loss of shade trees that we currently have, you might not get the full effect of 30-foot high canopy trees. You might not get the full effect of a 30-foot high canopy tree. So that's something to throw out there. There's, that was just an observation that staff saw.
So Jeff, I'm trying to understand. I think you are saying that the species of tree that would typically grow to a height of 30 feet is what's proposed to be planted in the landscape element and qualified as a shore canopy tree.
Right.
You're suggesting that those species should be enlarged.
Right.
The choice of species should be enlarged to include taller trees.
Larger shade trees.
As part of the landscape element.
Well, as part of the tree protection element, that those trees, because the landscape element and the tree protection element, those trees planted as part of the landscape element can count towards tree protection for newly planted trees. What I'm saying is if those trees are going to be counted for tree protection, you all might want to have Chatham Park consider a larger tree for tree protection credit. And somewhere in between the 40 and 60 range, your species, the amount of species grows quite significantly when you start talking about large shade trees in the 40 to 60 range at maturity as opposed to the 30-foot range of maturity. There's a limiting number of trees that grow to a 30-foot maturity for canopy. So I'll just throw that out there. It could be a good way for us to get more canopy, more shade, and really not that much park burn, I would think. But that's for Chatham Park and you all to think about. Likewise, with understory trees, staff would say, have you all contemplate a understory tree between 15 and 25 feet in height. Currently, the landscape element caps understory trees at 10 feet and 15 feet of maturity. So again, if this is tree protection and we're trying to get credit back for loss of tree, we might want to have a more substantial tree planted that would grow and have more shade. So, and again, I don't think that's a big item to sort of cross over with Chatham Park. But, you know, talk to those folks about that. And this is a comment that staff has made a couple of times, and they corrected it on the canopy tree, is that we have caliper sizes be consistent between the landscape element and the tree protection element, whereas the understory tree in the landscape element is 1.25, one and a quarter, in the tree protection element is one inch caliper. So I would encourage you all to encourage Chatham Park or request Chatham Park match those. So when staff is looking at plans, it's easy to decipher what, that we're not looking at different things. I envision that if, you know, a landscape plan came in and there could be color coding or noting that these trees are going to be more substantial and those qualify towards the tree protection, newly planted trees, as opposed to the landscape element qualification. That was just an observation that staff saw and honestly thought that the canopy in the landscape element was more substantial, but in the last iteration of the draft, it changed. And I'm not saying that they didn't tell us about that, it just didn't get highlighted to us, that canopy trees were now capped at 30-foot maturity. And that's one of the points that I have to reflect on.
Okay. Jeff, what would you recommend for the understory tree height?
15 to 25.
Could you repeat the caliper?
Yes.
I've got my notes.
Okay, the caliper in the landscape element for an understory tree is one and a quarter inch diameter per understory tree.
Per square?
No.
Per caliber?
Each inch of, right. So the tree planted in the ground in landscape element is one and a quarter inch caliper measured at six inches above, recall. In the tree protection element, an understory tree is one inch. And so I would just say, if one and a quarter inch is good for landscape element, one and a quarter should be good for the tree protection element.
Did you have any thoughts you wanted to pass along to us on helping us to understand the TCPA? And if so, were there other jurisdictions that used the TCPA kind of concept?
Yeah, I didn't, in the examples that I found, I didn't see that, but I'm not saying that they don't. I think as Chuck pointed out, unless you're into plan review and know the interpretations of ordinances, how they would be interpreted, it's hard to sort of understand in black and white how things go, because everything might not be black and white. There could be exceptions or waivers or things in other parts of the ordinance that we don't see. No, I think Chuck and you all have talked about how the TCPA and the TCA work. I think that the idea of a development plan or subdivision coming in and proposing their development along with the TCPA as part of the 200-acre tract or 50-acre tract or 25-acre tract, all of that area is going to be encumbered by the decisions that would be made by the town, whether you agree to those lots, you agree to that area of tree save or newly planted trees. And that's what would need to be built within the allotted time that the development has approval. And it would need to be plotted and set aside for future use.
And inventory.
Yeah, right, right. There would be an inventory as part of the process early on. Staff and Chatham Park would then use that to say which trees might need to stay, which ones might not, and then we'd have a conversation based on that.
And you feel comfortable making those decisions with, I mean, that sounds like a lot that's on your department?
As with any ordinance, and we have lots, and we have separate ordinances for Chatham Park, it takes effort and plan review to come through and really start applying those. I think we've seen with Chatham Park's elements, specifically the design element, you don't really understand the impact of a decision until we're applying it. But I think that's going to be the case with any element, any ordinance that you all pass, whether it's Chatham Park or Town Ordinance, you don't know until you start applying it. Best intentions are there, but maybe it's just not followed through, or we just didn't think about it. The one thing that has been evident throughout all the elements is that we do have a check-in annually with Chatham Park to suggest changes, suggest, you know, things that they might not look at. Vice versa, they have things that they want to have amended for their elements, and it's up to you all and future boards to either agree to those or not. So I think there is an opportunity for, at least with the current group of Chatham Park, is to have a conversation at least annually on how things are working and how things aren't working. And there is continuous dialogue, if not daily, weekly, between staff and Chatham Park on various elements of design. What I'm saying is we'll know when we know, if we know that it's not working, we'll let you know.
Great, thank you.
Jeff, do you have a recommendation on the tree credit area?
I don't. So it's proposed that one tree for every 750.
For a canopy?
That's for a canopy. And then there's one for every 2,000 square feet of understory. I think understory is a little strong or a little weak, however you look at it, in protect or providing back for. For a few iterations there, it was 1,000 square feet, and then it went to 2,000 square feet. Their explanation in their summary of changes was to provide for a more healthy natural planting area. I don't know what 2,000 square feet looks like for one understory tree. On the scenario that we ran earlier on that two-acre site with a .1 area, that was two additional understory trees, because your acreage is around 4,000 square feet or so. Is that not, I don't know. Other places use, have smaller credits given, some, I think some of them are 200 feet, 200 square feet in Germ, and Matthews, it appears to be 256. Davidson was a little odd, because it had some breakdown between large maturing trees for every 7,000 or 9,000 square feet of parcel area. And again, that's where the ordinance is going to specifically get you to the point that we're trying to get to on credit. The other, as I mentioned earlier, Germ and Matthews may allow for those park and lot trees and street trees to be counted towards all those trees, the trees that are required.
Germ does not.
Germ does not. Well, I'm not a landscape architect, there may be others in the room that could speak to the health of a site and the number of trees that could be planted in that area.
Do you know, I think our intention is to not include street trees nor park lot trees?
Right.
Well, they're going to have a different policy. So I guess in your example of that 2,000 square feet with the one understory, it would also include two and a half canopy trees?
In the example from three, when you have .1.
Well, I'm just thinking of the 2,000 square requirement.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And previous versions had 1,000 feet?
It did, it did. And I think that was, that's an area that you can engage in a conversation with Chatham Park about the difference of that and why was it such a 100% decrease?
Would it be good to get Chuck back up here and talk about those very specific things that we feel like we've made progress? Chuck, can we have your expertise on the amount of credits going from 1,000 to 2,000?
Okay, I was writing a lot of things. So which border we did in the first?
Let's start with what Jeff was saying about how the amount of credit given for understory trees was at one time per 1,000 square feet, and now is at 2,000.
There were a few things done, I think concurrently, when that happened. One of those was that the percentage of canopy, hardwood canopy trees went from 50% to 75%, meaning that we had, definitely had more, I think that was Ms. Foley's request, and we had definitely moved from more pines that would have been, include more, fewer pines and more canopy trees. And so that change in understory happened at the same time. We think, I think that, again, having more, talking about more than just canopy trees is important for the health of the ecosystem. But I don't think many, many people were following in line with me on that, in terms of worrying about understory so much. That was, so anyway, that combination of thoughts got us to that mix.
And what was your thought about the correlation between the landscape element and the tree protection element?
On the sizes?
On the size. Should we make that uniform at one point?
Well, yeah. I haven't thought about that before, just because I hadn't heard Jeff's comment. But my thought is, okay, there are going to be two things that have happened. One, we've already restricted the type of plants by going to all natives, which we've talked about. So that's not, not that that's a bad thing, but all of a sudden, all the possibilities of trees we could be planting has gotten smaller.
Or what, that you didn't, there isn't a change, that it doesn't say all native or stuff?
But again, I mean, it gets some wiggle, but the intent is still to go native as much as possible. But the issue about height, when you look at the literature that's out there, their canopy is a heading for a number of trees, and they are not all exactly the same height, they're not all exactly the same spread. If you look at a forest, you've got branching starting higher on some trees and lower on other trees, you've got multiple heights in the forest. But I think if you limit it by saying, okay, we're only going to use trees to get to this height, I do think it's limiting, because what you've done is reduced the number of trees that are on that list now that meet that height requirement. So there are going to be fewer in the 40 category than there would be in the greater-than-30 category. So I think ultimately, that leaves the more risk of having an unhealthy situation if you have disease or something that occurs in the forest and starts knocking out some of these different species of trees. So that's my thought on that.
You mean like there are a lot of different trees?
I'm sure, well, there are, but you're, we don't want to plant, when you say a lot, when you talk about hardwood canopy in native, you know, that starts to reduce that number. So a lot is a relative term. The other, to me also, with the, I mean, these trees are going to spread to 30 to 40 feet, we're planting them much closer than that. So it's not by adding the taller tree, you're not getting more shade. You've already got the maximum amount of shade, because all the canopy is grown together anyway.
There are eight trees, some canopy trees.
That meets, that meets the definition of canopy trees in the literature. I mean, 30, I'm not, again, that, if, what we're looking for is a variety of trees that are in the forest, not just one type of tree.
There will be smaller, there will be tree trees, but there are tracts that place, you know, grand old oak trees and that kind of thing.
There will be trees planted.
Should we use the pre-aging at least, at least total at 30 feet per?
Is the landscape element describing a minimum height for a canopy tree?
Describing at maturity, it has to be at least 30.
At least 30.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean cap, it doesn't mean that it's taller.
Well, but there's nothing that says they can't, that they will plant 40 and 50 and 60-foot tall trees at that maturity.
So it doesn't limit them, but it doesn't say, because I've heard you use the word cap, it doesn't mean.
Well, because that's the maximum requirement placed on the development, it's 30 feet, they have to meet a 30 feet. They don't have to meet a 40 or 50.
It can be higher.
It could be, but there's no requirement for it to be, that's why I use cap.
And the price of the tree, is not going to change because it's a 30-foot maximum height versus a 60-foot maximum height. This still is, I mean, it doesn't do us any, it's not any advantage to us to start looking for, okay, we ought to do all 30s, we get to spend less money. It's not the way that it works. I think it gets back to what the design professional is looking at, is what's best for the health of the, for the forest.
Urban forest.
You're right, it's not a natural, it's an urban recreated forest.
I don't know, maybe there's a way to a percentage like we did for some of the others. I think, to me, some of the striking cities are the ones that have the big grand trees. And I think that is going to create shade. I mean, I know what you're saying, you can have multiple ones together to create shade, but it's hard reaching in all directions.
Well, with the spacing that we've got on trees to meet the requirements, they are going to reach to each other, meaning that you'll max out on shade. I mean, that doesn't mean, don't plant bigger trees, that doesn't say that at all. I mean, that doesn't mean, don't plant bigger trees, that doesn't say that at all, but you're not increasing. I mean, I just think the variety actually, uh, is, is better, but, um, and, and it will, we can put percentages in there, it's just going to be one, to me, it's one more, and I'll say unnecessary because I don't think it's necessary, but it's one more thing that the staff's got to worry about as they're reviewing. And, uh, I don't know, you'll get to a point where there are landscape architects on staff or urban foresters on staff that understand this necessarily or would have to continually be educated, but.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, is that, um, if we don't have a mixture that we can end up with all thirty foot trees, and I know you'll say, I won't do that, but what happens if someone else is developing this land, you say you retired, you're a big fan of performance, if you retire, I want the language in this element to be based on something that will be bulletproof regardless of who the developers, because I, I believe you, I mean, I know, I have.
Well, it's not just me, I mean, it's, uh, when I, that's why I said a minute ago, a licensed design professional, we talked about what that license means. And so you're doing, again, you're not coming in there trying to design a thirty foot maximum height, uh, tree coverage area, you're trying to get the best health of that area. And that means you will have a mix, and you'll have a mix of heights and a mix of species.
And we make sure.
I think we may be a little far field here because I think the landscape element is established, it establishes a minimum height of a tree at maturity qualified as a canopy tree of thirty feet. What I think Jeff is saying is write something into the tree element that says it will be taller than thirty feet.
For the, for the trees that are.
That are part of the.
The tree of which.
And like I said, I can do that, I think you're limiting the number of species then that you're going to be including, and I think that you're under risk of more problems. That's all I'm saying, but we'll, we'll change that to.
So just, you know, thank you Chuck for maybe saying about changing that, but I look at it as, when I look at ordinances, how am I going to apply it when I'm reviewing plans? And what kind of comment can I bring to the table when I'm reviewing plans? If, right now, it's, it leaves canopy tree in tree protection open, so staff and future boards could really go to Chatham Park and say, no, I want a fifty foot tree protection tree on that site. By putting an actual definition of what that tree protection tree is between forty to sixty feet, that gives staff and Chatham Parks and future developers an idea of what the town is looking to see, and there's no, there might be, there's really no, no room to negotiate. It's going to be between forty and sixty. Right now, they leave it like, like it is, staff's going to make a comment and we're going to bring it to you guys to say, tree protection trees are all thirty feet, and that's going to be the sticking point. Why not go ahead and agree now at the writing of it that for those trees, we can have something a little bit different and just take it off the, the table? Um, and then we're just worrying about species of trees and what that is, that grows between forty and sixty.
Right, now you hear Chuck saying you're limiting the choice of canopy tree because there's apparently an abundance of trees that only grow at thirty feet in the category of canopy.
Yeah, I, I, I think there, there could be an argument made that there's, it's the opers, that there's more trees that grow as shade tree, mature canopy shade tree. Now, I believe the tree protection element is trying to provide for them, they grow in the forty to sixty range.
That makes sense, there's, if you go in a forest, you go around here and you're going to see a lot of.
I think Chuck's point about trying to be native, we need to explore what those trees are going to be and have an appendix to this, uh, element or landscape element. The landscape element points you to, you know, the state extension list, which is fine, we're using that. Um, but if we wanted to have a list of the top fifteen shade trees, mature shade trees that grow to forty to fifty, or forty to sixty feet, and have development pick between those, you might want to have an appendix at some point in time. That could be one of those things that we come back in our, um, check-ins of how things are working.
This brings me to something that I've given a lot of thought, and that is, how can we prepare, because I know there's been talk of, well, we're not sure if we can get native trees. Um, and I've talked to Chuck about this, um, there are several growers here of, when Dennisson comes to wind up, I've met him, but I've heard lots of good things about him, he grows native trees, and he is willing to meet with Chatham Park and give a sense of what the needs are going to be, and then he would work in cooperation with other growers to meet the needs of Chatham Park, which would be good on so many different levels. It would help Chatham Park, you don't have to bring your trees in so, so far, you, you're supporting the local economy, um, and you have abundant, hopefully, a lot of this local trees. So I'd like to hear that out, and that's something I'd like to see happen is, uh, you know, go ahead and letting them know what your needs are and just go ahead and start growing these trees for Chatham Park.
And just for the record, I've already said that.
Yes, you said you were interested in meeting.
Right, well, obviously, the closer the source of trees, the, the better it is for us. And what about if we do something similar to the native language where we say we will, we will meet a mature height of forty feet unless approved by you? In situations where we either can't find them or there are reasons to start including some that are thirty feet and above, and different situations like that that you may find compelling.
What's your opinion on that?
Um, yeah, I think that's a, a half attempt, that, that's a saying that the trees are going to be between forty and sixty feet or. It's saying that it's going to be the forty feet, however, they're still up for you all to say, no, we don't like that, or, I don't know what the, what the nurseries have out there, maybe Chuck definitely has more thoughts on that, and so I'm speaking out of turn on that, but just from an ordinance, and it seems to be clear for us to say, no, the trees need to be X, between X and X for canopy and, and understory, and we will work collaboratively together to figure out what that tree is, and hopefully, one day, have a, a list of trees that either the town adopts through a UDO or that we add as an appendix to Chatham Park at some point in time. These are generally the trees that will be planted. If one of those trees, those fifteen or twenty trees cannot be found, or they're just, that's not, they've all died off for some reason fifty years now, um, it could be an amendment to that or an agreement, yeah, we can do something else. As a board, you have discretion to say, a different tree. Um, so, uh, and I think having a list that says something to, not must say, must plant these trees, but could be these trees, um, that gives us a little bit of a clearer expectation of what would be planted. There could be a, a design manual that shows all the trees at maturity, and then we have that on, on the website available for developers to have.
We still enforce them.
Specific to Chatham Park and, and Pittsburgh.
You want to say, uh, trees between X and X, so I want to.
I think that gives.
Make it best to start at a percentage, you want a percentage or?
Not, well, not, not a percentage, a height and a period.
Height between such and such.
And I'm, and I'm, and, right, and I'm not, um, saying that the caliper size needs to be increased or, or et cetera, understory trees, a matchup landscape. So they can still plant the two and a half inch caliper trees and the two inch caliper for pine trees or evergreens, that's still on the table. I'm just saying that species of tree, because it's the tree protection element, it's trying to replace a forest that may have been cut down, maybe it needs to be something other than thirty, thirty feet. That, and, and forty to sixty seems to be a good, good range for us to get varying trees.
So Jeff, knowing, working with an ordinance, trying to interpret it, if there was a proposed species of tree that was eighty feet at the forty, would you deny that tree?
I don't think we would.
But the language would.
That's it.
The language would say it's between forty and sixty.
At, at, yeah, at a minimum.
At a minimum forty.
So I was saying, you need to say sixty, just say minimum forty.
Yes, at maturity. Yeah, I, I would hope that, if the situation was, was, and the planting situation is correct, and a development wanted to plant a more substantial tree, we'd be okay with that. So yes, I'd want the ordinance to be able to allow that.
So you really can set up thirty feet at maturity to be forty feet at maturity?
If, if that's the, yes. Um, I think having a range gives an expectation to the reader that we're looking for something more than just the minimum, uh, that bottom, that bottom range. Yeah, it's minimum forty.
It's basically kind of implies you want to have a decision.
Right. Just have to worry about the worst case scenario, the worst case developer who would come in and plant all, all the same sized tree and it's not, isn't the effect that we want for that particular development or multiple developments. I'm not saying that these folks would ever do that, or we would allow for them to do that, it's just could be out of our hands one day, and having a range could, could work.
So do we feel that that's a recommendation if we'd like to incorporate the canopy tree at a minimum of forty feet and an understory tree at a minimum of fifteen feet?
I'm more concerned about understory because of, because of the number of possibilities, native possibilities, um, but I shouldn't say more, I guess unequally, but I do think there are fewer in that list of possibilities than understory than there are canopy.
The under fifteen feet is more narrow than a tree.
Well, it's an under tree tree though, it's not trying to be a canopy tree.
What species do you think that would be, not being a canopy?
I, I have to go, go look.
So is presently the landscape element, so ten to fifteen feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're recommending fifteen to twenty five?
Yeah. And make sure I said this too.
Are you saying eighteen to twenty five maximum?
I thought we were just, it's, I can understand changing the minimum, but I can't understand what I take on the height.
Yes, very good. Yes, so fifteen feet of the tree, uh, understory tree.
We need to say mixture of height. We kind of need to be part of the same variation of height, that's what you're referring to.
If landscape architects apply their craft.
Yeah.
Might create a healthy.
And remember, when we get a mixture of height, because the landscape element already mandates that we have ten to fifteen, uh, feet of understory, and then that up to thirty feet of canopy, it's just these ones that apply the tree protections can feel different. And if it's five more feet at maturity or fifteen more feet at maturity, maybe that's not.
I think in more terms of the, the large canopy trees, if we just say minimum of forty feet, are they just going to plant all forty foot trees, or do we need to say something that encourages, calls us taller trees? I, I feel like we need some sort of language that encourages, not just forty foot trees, that encourages, uh, large canopy trees, their mixture, so they have to be all forty, but not all of them size that they're.
I think it, I, I would hope in Chuck's craft and his colleagues and, and landscape architect would know not to plant all the same tree, because if a disease or bug gets them, then they're all going to die. And so there would be a mixture, uh, of trees and that they would be of varying heights, um, throughout the whole site, uh, one, because the landscape element already has a different height, and if we go to a, to the fifteen feet minimum for understory, then that's, the jumping off point is, is higher for those, that one particular understory tree or two understory trees that might apply to a two acre site.
Okay, because we need to bridge that, um, that forty to fifty feet, that's sort of maybe they could agree that there was some concern with forty?
Well, I do, I do have, have concern that whatever the bottom number is, could be the goal of a developer.
Exactly, but the best we can do is just.
Well, that's, well, that's where the, uh, the list of trees that we would like to see planted, because all trees have a growth pattern, one tree might grow, the same tree might grow at forty feet and grows at fifty feet, or forty feet or sixty feet, it just depends on the, the way it's planted and what's around it and its ground, so they could plant some maple tree or an oak tree, and we think it's going to grow to forty, it might grow to thirty, or it might grow to fifty. So having, uh, having a list of plants that might be there and knowing that plant grows anywhere between thirty to fifty feet in height, or sixty feet in height, whatever that is, we must know that it could be the bottom number always, or it could be the top, or somewhere in between.
So earlier in this conversation, uh, Jeff, I think it was you pointed out that we had, in landscape element, we have an appendix that refers to native.
Right.
A list published by the state or some other authority.
Yeah, that's.
So we're not prescribing the list, we're referring to another authority that has that maintains the list.
Right.
And I do recall, Chuck, that we were going to have some reference to that in this document, so I appreciate your reminder because we don't have that. And, uh, I hope we can get that. And the, I, I hear some murmurs in the audience, and I'm wondering if someone might volunteer, is there a site maintained by N C State University Forestry Service that might go to this question of heights of canopy trees?
Yes.
What would you recommend?
So many trees.
Um, I mean, we're looking at trees that are a hundred, Sycamore, a hundred eighty. Anyway, the Common Forest Trees in North Carolina, from North Carolina Forester, you know, in its first edition, has a gazillion trees, and most of them are more like fifty to a hundred feet, are oak, pop, I mean, the, the list is huge of our native trees that are.
And how many of them can you buy in nurseries?
Well, now, we haven't talked about Mellow Marsh and Kear Nursery either, which are both in Chatham County that specialize in native trees.
There are a few growers here who said.
But even the Forester.
Oh, no, but some of these will not be brought in a nursery.
That's not negative, but so many of the understory trees, they'll, some of those will reach that twenty five feet, so starting a little bigger is a great idea. I mean, you look at the, you know, the sassafras and mulberries and on and on, all these beautiful little trees, we're not going to be leaving any trees out by what you're proposing, but I do think you need to be thinking a little taller, that, you know, that these are, are native hardwood canopy trees, which can grow quite tall, certainly much more than forty.
Common Forest Trees, twentieth edition, the one, or first edition.
Either one.
Published by the North Carolina Forest Service.
They give heights of all trees.
Again, I think the key is to meet with growers ahead of time and let them know what you want, and they can start growing them so when you need them, they'll be there, they'll be ready. And, you know, you have a contract with them, they grow exactly what you want.
Locally adapted, local soils.
No, I'm not disagreeing with any of them.
Okay. Other elements we touched on, Nick, that we wanted, uh, caliper stuff.
Yeah.
So we thought, Chuck, about the thousand foot, and the two thousand foot issue as Chuck has indicated, occurred when the canopy was increased from fifty seven to about percent. Okay, um, I think we have sort of a generalized agreement on that, so you've got a, you've got a notation and.
Um, something I referred to earlier about getting a question that I was going to refer to, is that what you're talking about? What do you mean by notation? I've written, I've written down these.
Yeah, but the canopy at a minimum, minimum of forty feet, the understory at a minimum of fifteen, and there being some appendix listed and.
Prefer the list in the landscape element and refer to the common forest trees.
And the phrase, perhaps, encourage a mixture of height.
Right, I've got the right. Right, I've got the right one.
Well, in accordance with what, uh, Speaker said during the public discussion, um, could we, could we work again on tree coverage planning area definition, on page two of the element?
I understand the definitions, so what, what are you trying to?
Well, I think you're the only one that does. You invite.
Yeah, I disagree with that. I think the people that work with these things understand it.
How can we, how can we make, um?
I, I wasn't asking Mr. Bonza rhetorical, I mean, because when I was asking him to sort of define what he meant. I think any way you cut this, we're talking about the same thing, it's just, you can call it whatever you want to, but this is what the Durham ordinance does.
So let me see if I can help. Let's say you've got the, well, let's start with something easier. Let's say Town Hall, an office building, okay? It was, it proposed to sit on a piece of property, and that piece of property is two acres in size. That property is the T C P A, is the tree coverage planning area. Yes, it is.
I think we're trying to discuss this this board, and, and direct from that this district.
So that parcel of land has a requirement to have T C A on it, the building, parking, storm alarm management, landscape elements, the lighting, everything that goes into a development. It also has that requirement of having T C A on the parcel. So it could be considered a T C P A planning area. In a residential subdivision, we are finding value in not requiring the trees to be on individual lots, but requiring it to be on a commonly owned piece of property within the boundary of that subdivision. And that boundary is the T C P A. And within it, you've got a road, you've got lots, you've got set aside areas for tree coverage, the T C A. So the T C P A includes the development and the T C A. And the T C P A's boundary and the type of use that you're having defines the percentage of tree coverage area you must have, whether it's commercial or residential. Residential subdivisions, for the reasons I just stated, do not want to have trees on individual lots, because we don't want to do that, we'd rather preserve having in larger clusters than on individual lots. The others?
With, with due respect, I, I disagree with your use of the word "we," because you're, you're implying that this board just agrees with that assertion, and we've had this disagreement before, that there are members of this board who would like to see trees required on residential lots. That's it.
Okay, I don't have that same opinion. And I think we'll get far more trees if we have the trees off of the lots, and we'll have a lot more, uh, less strikes within the community. Now, so residential subdivision has a T C P A. The other type of development that is important to have a T C P A is shopping center, because shopping centers typically will have very small out parcel lots, where the McDonald's is not going to go there, or whatever, Walgreens, whoever, if they've got the requirement on their property. And therefore, if you take that shopping center boundary and add to it enough land to then have the tree coverage area for the entire parcel, not require it at little pieces here, here, and here, but a larger area of stain. And that's what the T C P A is trying to do, is allow for clustering of shopping centers in residential developments. Single-family residential developments, multi-family has to have the T C A on the property, on the parcel property.
So maybe the concern is that the T C P A could be really large, and it could be used as a way, but it just still have to have the same?
Percentage. Yeah, as big as you make it, the T C A grows with it.
It's, it's, it could be clustered.
It is.
It was several areas, not just one.
It could be one, it could be one variable, I mean, one large area. Now, if it's a residential subdivision, it's going to be a minimum of twenty percent of the limit.
But it would have to be in one twenty percent area, it wouldn't have to be.
So then they, they'd have to, dense areas?
Yes. And again, they have come up with this language, T C P A. It would be known in any other parlor as the site, the boundary of the site, that would include the proposed development and the tree coverage area.
No, that, that's, that's clearly, we're clearly here in the opposite, Mr. Fiogo. We, we, we look tonight at a site that uses T C P A, they all, so.
I don't believe that.
I'm shocked if we see a two-acre T C P A. Your, your original starting example was the Town Hall, we're not going to see a two, two-acre T C P A.
He was, I'm sorry, I'm not part of this.
Right. No, I don't know the site plan of your authority, but if it's a T C P A, then it has T C A within it.
Are you talking about a draw-up report that had the, the T C A department on it, or strange?
Information Center. It's a T C P A, well, it wouldn't be a T C P A.
Not, not under this present. Right, not under this present wording, back when that was done, all that was.
Did I give you my packet?
No, I did, we had it folded, out there holding it together, but I didn't.
Yes, thank you. We did look at the information center informally, uh, and I apologize to the audience that it's not, it wasn't visible when we were pointing it out earlier. But that discussion involves this site.
Right.
The T C P A is bigger than even this.
I believe, but it's not a T C P A.
I think that's what's been proposed, made it the T C A.
It's a commercial site plan that requires on that property tree coverage area. Well, you know what, it doesn't, because we don't have a tree coverage requirement, because we haven't adopted the element, but if it were, it would not be a T C P A, it would be a commercial site plan, and it would have a requirement of T C A on the parcel.
I, I really think that you're trying to confuse the issues, Mr. Fiogo, because we've clearly seen, this, this, the site is much smaller than any implied T C P A, and it's quite frustrating. I think that this is, this is word salad, as someone else suggested, and it's, it's obfuscious. The T C P A is intended to be a much larger area, that is clear, that's been made very clear to me.
Right.
So you're suggesting that it's the same as a site?
He, that was just descriptive, though.
What I, a site, an individual site, has on, the buildings, the parking lot, let's just leave it to three elements, buildings, parking lot, and tree cover. And in that scenario, it is a site, but within that boundary are those three elements. In a residential subdivision, you have a site, and within it, you have the subdivision, the road, the houses, and the T C A. That's when you call it the T C P A. On an individual commercial site, it's not a T C P A, but essentially the same darn thing, because you've got the three elements on a defined area, which helps you understand what percentage of that area has to be the T C A.
I believe that it is confusing language.
Chuck, can you work on a redraft, did that definition happen?
No, ma'am. That's as simple as we can get it. And it is very, um, understandable for anybody that works with this. And if you compare it to what other municipalities are doing, it's exactly the same thing with a different name to it. It's the same process, it's using the same three elements that Mr. Fiogo talks about.
Chuck, playing professional, do you find this confusing?
Um, yeah, I've been in it for a month now, and I kind of get it, so.
How do you enforce it?
Describe it, it's how we would.
So enforcing it's not going to be an issue for us?
We want to enforce it as you've described it, and review as you've described it, and if there's a difference in interpretation, we'll have that discussion at a later time. But I believe that site, a development, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, a site, individual site, subdivision, has to have, not only all the requirements that go along with, with development, it has to include the area that's going to have trees. And that, and then the percentage of trees that will be in that area is based off of, one, how many trees are there today, and then where it is when the development, um, and it's residential, it's used, or.
So Jill, did you, you win the lottery, and you leave us for Sonny Acapulco, or you're abducted by space aliens, and somebody comes along that's completely fresh to this, how, how long are they going to be to get out to speed on it?
Well, obviously, there's going to be communication in between current staff, which we all have to believe, you all would have to be gone, um, we're all gone, and somebody would have to be reading it. So there would have to be an understanding of what the, the planning area means. Planning area means you're planning to develop, and in that entire area, all the requirements of this particular element and others have to apply in that planning area.
And what is the maximum outside boundary that you might envision or predict if you had this all?
Oh, as to what a planning area might, might encompass? Yeah, um, so, you know, there could be two-hundred acre sites, there could be archers, taller, I don't know.
Do I think we need something to constrain it from being too far from?
Well, I mean, as I think the others have pointed out, the percentage is the percentage, whether it's a small site or a big site, if it's twenty percent, it's twenty percent on two-hundred acres, or two acres, um, or a thousand acres. It just has to land in that level, that area where those trees will be. And they make these trees in this area, they make, in, thinking of large sites, all the trees won't be in the same T C A, it will be scattered throughout, which I think is what we want to encourage, unless it's a, maybe a specific dense forest that we want preserve, they produce, and we may want them to say, no, all the trees are going to be kept right here. So to your question whether it needs to be capped at some, I think we would be capping it for tree protection, where we don't cap other, I mean, a five-hundred acre subdivision could come in under zoning or subdivision, or, or Chatham Park, and the requirements are the requirements.
So I, I actually wouldn't propose a cap.
Okay.
What I'm asking is some under measure to, to restrain the, the, restrain the diameter of the T C P A, for example.
Okay. Oh, I thought you were going to. I, I don't have an idea of what that could be.
Can I just make a suggestion? To me, uh, when I first read this, I couldn't make sense of it, but when I hear the explanation, it makes sense. And so I do think it could be helpful to have this language as clear as what you were explaining, because basically what you're saying is that if every piece of property has to have, it will be determined, I think, I did think it could be.
Yeah, so, so there's been, we've had a, a number of early on, um, sort of explanations with Chatham Park and Whinders, about what that looks like. There could be an example, a small example, that could be placed inside the element that says what we're saying tonight, um, because we've already seen it, um, on, on slideshows.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way you're saying the T C P A, this is the piece of proposed property that will include T C A, landscaping on, and, and then I think some separate sentences play, that it could be village center, shopping center, single-family mill, I think that's what confuses it, when you put all of that in one sentence. I'm not to think, and maybe, yeah, because if, if.
I, I have no objection if that's what the board wants to have, as a more descriptive definition of T C P A.
It's more of a clarification, it doesn't necessarily mean more descriptions, it just means a clarification. I think there's a simpler way of saying it, so that it's more understandable to people who are new at this, um, because if, you know, you, you have some people who can't make sense of it, then chances are there's going to be others.
Right.
So I'm thinking it would take that much to get this cleaned up, and to a sense that it's more, that it, that it helps you understand that one area, one thing, I mean, maybe try and, and to get, to get something that's more clear.
Well, I, I'm not a planner, and I don't have the time for it, but I, I am concerned that specifically, we're going to see T C P As drawn in a way that takes advantage of federally required buffers to, to address tree cover and, and accumulations and densities of trees that should be on other lots closer to residences, closer to residential buildings. And I am also torn, and very much mindful of the tension between sprawl and density. I think we all would prefer to see denser development, and yet we recognize the value of having trees, larger clusters of trees, retained trees, native trees, providing a huge array of benefits and services that they provide, being close to the goal. So.
Jeff, did you, did you want to respond to that, or I?
Oh, I was going to say that other ordinances that I've, I've read over the last couple years do encourage development to keep these buffers, I mean, encourage, as Chuck went out, those are the ones that are highest priority to help they give those benefit.
We've done that. We're going to learn more about it later.
They give credit, they give credit to tree protection.
They give credit to.
Right, where you, where you're saying you should give credit for that.
No, not.
I'm not saying should give credit, I'm, I'm saying that all of it shouldn't be placed in those areas.
Well, others, other ordinances would say that's where they want it placed. We don't have, I mean, we don't follow those, those guidelines, but that's where other places want trees to be protected.
I said, should we talk about, uh, buffers that would already be required to be protected?
Yeah, sure, that's what's proposed, is that trees will be, will be given tree protection, it's going to occur in these areas, and we can count those areas for tree protection. That's what's being proposed.
I think the language started required first, T C A.
I'd like to see you going on this, raise, include those areas, threaten, and also kill you.
We'll, um, get on those areas, because not every parcel or plan includes one of those areas.
My concern is that they don't, don't work in such a way that each page, each page, um, that we don't have to, that we, that we, that we, that we heard about.
The T C P A will be the legal boundary of planning.
If there'll be a larger area over which to spread it, the larger the TCPA is, the...
Larger the TCPA is.
That's true, but there'll also be more opportunities to place it in areas which may have already been designated or required to have TCA, such long tree buffers.
I don't believe that there will be a TCA that's allowed to count twice. Because of the single panel and because of the tracking system that will be imposed.
But if you go through this gerrymandering as you described and you start finding these pieces of trees over here to meet this, when you come over here to develop the area adjacent with those pieces of trees, what are they going to use for TCPA? How are they going to meet it? They've got to provide it some other way. So, I mean, it fills in itself and meets the percentages. Even though there's no way that you're going over here to grab something over here to meet this requirement, because you've got to, at the end of the day, do the property adjacent to that and meet the requirement for that property.
Is it appropriate to move on to other questions for the TCPA, TCA, two major...
Folks who are in the planning business, the land development business, can conclude. Because parallel limits is not trying to be separate. Says that there are three or four types of development that can use this. Otherwise, one has to stand alone.
You can just say that, it's more clear than what I'm...
Well, no, it's, it is clear that it does that.
Do you?
Yeah.
Maybe if you just said, for that development type, maybe you can perhaps say such as village center, shopping center, single family development or portion. Can you say this, Chris?
Your take, you're taking what's been written and I think, I understand what you said and I think you could do that.
So that it will be clear. I, I, it's clear to me what you put here. That's clear to me, but just for clarity personally.
So I think just switching the seat, the order of things, say that the following are so, each tree covered planning areas upon this area of land contains any one of the following development sites such as, list the development types, then say, together with the existing trees, annual trees, as shown on the master plan.
What about this? Drumroll. This following is Baldwin's, I think what she was saying. Tree coverage planning area around the TCPA is defined as an area of land that contains either a village center, a shopping center, a single family development, or a portion of section 7.1 as shown on the master plan, located on the north side of Russet Run Road, together with the existing trees and/or new trees needed to satisfy the TCA requirements for each of these, any of these development types.
Don't you have to bring this forward like that?
It doesn't address all my concerns.
Yeah, so it's unproven. We haven't seen this happen before with greenfield development. We haven't seen how this is going to play out. We don't know to what extent this is going to give us kinds of clusters of trees outside of buffers, in addition to buffers, in addition to trees that are required to be protected by federal regulations. We don't see what's going to come from this language. And that's why I'm jealous. If some board members were able to go on a field trip today, I would very much like to see real life examples. And until then, I can't vote for the TCPA. Just, the language is just, it's still...
Well, as I said before, in response to what you just said, every tree protection ordinance that contemplates providing trees within the development does it this way. They just don't call it this. And so it's proven and we're going to be dispelled. I had another issue I was asked to discuss.
Well, I'll bring up again something I brought up before, and that is, in keeping with the first land use plan, which is too late to change the 2,000 foot buffers. However, we can still provide graded protection within the buffers of the Hall River, which would not only help protect the Hall River, but the streams that feed into Hall River. I feel like this is very important, is protecting our drinking water. I just feel it different, we should have higher tree canopy in these areas. Are there others agree with that? There's some way that we can get this percentage up to like 50, 60% tree coverage within that buffer.
Well, that was, that was the issue I was going to refer to. That's, I don't know, can we hear others? Since the last meeting when you brought this up, and I'll say, this is not, this is not an issue that we, you know, just heard in the last few months during this discussion and thought was important. This has been important since Chatham Park was, the master plan was approved. Because that started laying out the framework for certain requirements that ended up being laid out in the open space element primarily, but also when we talk about this. But when you run the calculation of the requirements in the open space element over the 2,000 foot area, so in the first thousand feet of land adjacent to the Hall River that we have in Chatham Park in the solid north village, 60% of that land in the first thousand feet is protected and the trees will be untouched. Okay?
So that's based on what's the fact on?
What the open space element requires, has been laid out in that. And so, and it started with the master plan. There were some things already stated in the master plan that that was based on. Then when you go from zero to 2,000 feet, the total land area that's protected is 37%. So since that's all residential area, it's almost twice what the requirement is with the 20% requirement over residential uses. Now 37 and that next band, but over the first thousand feet is 60% over the entire 2,000 feet is 37%. So we feel like that's a pretty solid commitment to protecting trees in that area closest to the river.
So the 60% is rate? How can we bring that in the 2,000 foot range? How can we bring that up?
Well, when I, when I give you that, remember, we've talked about how we are getting, we are getting no credit within the residential lots. There will be trees that, we talked about this, and particularly when we saw the larger lots today, there will be existing trees in larger lots. We just aren't getting credit for that with this. That percentage will increase because that's where the larger lots are. But I, but there's no way to commit to 60% TCA outside of single family lots in common area. Well, canopy, oh, we're way beyond that. If we, if we've got 37% TCA, I mean, I bet you it's 75% canopy probably. I mean, we've been using that rule of thumb of three times the TCA for the canopy. And I just don't want to say something I haven't tested, but...
So including the 2,000 foot buffer, you're saying that there's a 75%?
Canopy, sir. Because again, we've got, we've got street trees along every one of those streets. We've talked about that before. And I showed you one example today. Where trees were planted between the sidewalk and the back of curb, what would be in the right way that's reducing the heat island effect generated by the pavement of the roads, getting no credit for that as canopy or TCA. Getting no credit for canopy or TCA within the single family lots in that area. So there's no question that it's going to be beyond, you know, that high, it's going to be a higher number when you're talking about canopy.
So what would you say if the canopy in the first 1,000 feet?
85, 90%?
That's with the general buffer. Is that counting on the 300 foot buffer or 350 foot buffer that would carry?
Well, we've got, the two areas, one has 300, one has 500 that was increased. We'll talk about that. Yeah, we proposed within various documents that we've, that is, 1,000 feet undisturbed.
That's with the park?
Partly, that's part of it, but the rest of it is where we would have developed between those two pieces of same land.
So that 1,000, 1,000 foot would extend past the park?
Oh, yes. It's not just, it's not just the park. It's anything in Chatham Park. There's the area up there with, from 500 to 1,000 feet that is not in the park. It is open to development. But we've committed now to keep it. Open space tree protection area.
Yeah, this is a case study in how related, interconnected various policy FSR. So the audience has noted that there has been litigation that has resulted in a settlement and the board has on the agenda to hear about that settlement later. And yet, the terms of that settlement are relevant to the current discussion and Mr. Foley's concerns. So I'm not sure how we should deal with that.
Well, I believe the settlement makes reference to a buffer from the Hall of 300 feet in one section and 1,000 feet in another section. And the master plan has 300 feet in one section and 500 feet in the other. And the small area plan that I have seen showed 300 and 1,000. So what are we dealing with?
I'm telling you, there's still, there's still, having a 300 and 1,000, I'm just saying. Do you have any...
I don't know quite which meant by the last, but that 300 feet is not in anyone's yard. It's a, as, the Hall River had, originally had a 50 foot riparian buffer along the river. Within the river documents, we've increased that to an additional 250 feet of riparian buffer along the Hall River that is outside of anyone's, anyone's residential lot.
How close, how close, how can I be from the river?
The closest residential property would be 300 feet.
Right. And that's not more than 300 is not really that far. People are usually, you know, like, test it out in the yard, retailer or something.
While we're dealing with the TCA aspect of this, the master plan already established 300, so that's from our standpoint, so. But your question was you wanted a higher percentage relating those, and there's definitely a higher percentage of tree production at 2,000 feet than anywhere else in Chatham Park.
And this would be an area with larger, larger lots than typical in other areas. So it is likely that they will have more trees on them, yet again, the threat of being different.
Yeah, that's, that's, we saw examples of those, of those larger lots look like.
So when you say like that 85 to 90% tree canopy, I assume that means you're not counting yard trees, that that street trees?
No, well, that's, that's the difference between canopy and TCA. You have to count that to talk about canopy. I mean, that was what we've talked, these other places that talk about canopy, they're, they're looking at aerial photography to see what's covered in parking lots, streets, where trees have been planted outside of the control of the actual...
Can we move for a moment to that concern about the protocol for replacing dead trees and distributing the caliper? Is that something that you have in your notes and you're willing to...
Well, I wanted to talk about it further because we didn't finish talking about it. It's a, has, the Hall River had originally had a 50-foot riparian buffer along the river. Within the documents, we've increased that to an additional 250 feet of riparian buffer along the Hall River that is outside of anyone's residential lot.
How close, how close, how far from ID, from, from the river?
The closest residential property would be 300 feet.
Right. And that's not more than 300 is not really that far. People are usually, you know, like, test the stuff in the yard, retailer, or something.
While we're dealing with the TCA aspect of this, the master plan already established 300, so that's from our standpoint, so. But your question was you wanted a higher percentage relating those, and there's definitely a higher percentage of tree production at 2,000 feet than anywhere else in Shattuck Park.
And this would be an area with larger lots than typical in other areas, so it is likely that they will have more trees on them, yet again, the credit would be given.
Yeah, that's, we saw examples of those, of those larger lots look like.
So when you say like an 85 to 90% tree canopy, I assume that means you're not counting yard trees, that that's street trees?
No, well, that's the difference between canopy and TCA. You have to count that to talk about canopy. I mean, that was what we've talked, these other places that talk about canopy, they're looking at aerial photography to see what's covered in parking lots, streets, where trees have been planted outside of the control of the actual area.
Can we move for a moment to that concern about the protocol for replacing dead trees and distributing the caliper? Is that something that you have in your notes and you're willing to?
Well, I wanted to talk about it further because we didn't finish talking about it. There's obviously a point in time where we're gone, we've talked about this before. Lightning hits a tree, who's responsible for that tree? I mean, we can't, we can't cover trees in perpetuity. And so usually that language I was talking about is through the development of a site through, if it's a phased development, you continue to come in asking for approvals. You've got to cover that or if that, if that discussed with tree damage.
I would think that it's an existing stand of trees. Nature will manage those trees. If there's an area of TCA where trees have been planted, just like landscape buffers, it'd be the responsibility of the landlord to replace, to always have the TCA.
And if they didn't, you have to talk about it.
I think it would be a zoning violation, just like if they decided they didn't need as many parking spaces or something, have to say no, it's a zoning violation if you not provide the pure parking spaces. If you don't have TCA that meets the standards of TCA, well, then you're in a zoning violation.
That's right, to the extent that we met it. And this future urban forester, you know, hire me, hire for me, will be out there taking into it. If Kathy sees or she sees things that don't match plans, go to the landlord. And that will just be reprinted back. I think what best thing is in language as to what rate of replanting that is. But Chuck explained, if it's a 36-inch caliber specimen tree, we'd want the equivalent to be replanted back somewhere on that belt. Like, if you have eight-inch trees or something else, they would have to, preferably somewhere close to that here where the, that's not controlled.
You've got, and you've got an area that is now, boy, these rifles are going to plant a tree there, but...
Even a cluster of trees get wiped out by the hurricane. I mean, it's just saying we need to have a plan in place of what's happening.
So if a tornado or a hurricane comes through Pittsburgh, goes up through Charleston and wipes out every tree in Pittsburgh, every property owner in this town is required to replace their trees, is what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying in tree protected areas, or trees that are protected.
So in TCA areas, anybody that has a developed site in Pittsburgh, they're going to be required to replace their trees after the hurricane?
I believe they should if it's an area that's designated...
If everybody's doing it, I mean, if this is something that is across-the-border requirement for everybody, then, I mean, we're part of everybody, but I don't think it should be something that Shattuck Park does and no one else does.
I'd be saying, if it's been designated as a TCA, and something happens to those trees, then it's not like, it's only a tree that's part of a tree. Or this is replaced a tree that has done significant trees that have done.
The significant trees.
And that's what I'd say, in the cluster, hopefully nature will take care of that. I'm just suggesting...
No, that was what I was getting ready to point out, that as we, as you see, with the maturity of these areas, trees are popping up in that area all the time in the scheme of time when you're looking at a long period of time. So you're adding trees without planting anything verging on it?
Right.
It's, it's happening naturally.
It's everywhere, farthest everywhere.
Yeah, it's happening, it's happening everywhere.
But I guess my point is, if it's a designated TCA area, if something happens to the trees, then the trees need to be replaced. It has been designated as a tree area, tree coverage area.
And so that's, that's what I'm asking you, the question, so within the UDO, you're going to put that in the UDO for every property owner, because there'll be tree protection requirements for every property owner?
Well, I think this is, this is not every property owner. This is a planned district development.
Well, you've already told us that you're not putting the burden of development and the burden of these different standards on, because on Shattuck Park's back and not require everybody else to carry their weight. And so I don't, it doesn't make sense to me that you would be requiring us to replace our TCA areas, and the same thing happens to an adjacent property owner, and you don't do that.
Well, Shattuck Park investors have received the privilege of a planned developed district ordinance.
And we have, after that, how many million dollars to parks, how many million dollars to bike lanes, how many million dollars to refilling water? You just can't...
We need to focus on Shattuck Park, we know we're not doing a UDO.
Well, I'm telling you, it's getting...
How, how would that be if we have an area, this is called our tree protection area, it's kind of like these orange fences that say tree protection area, and they're full dozen. If you have a something that's called the tree protection area and there's no trees on it, then there, yeah, there needs to be trees.
Well, if it's an act of God, that's where we, we don't control that. I mean, if we knock the trees down ourselves...
If a tree dies of old age, you offer something, you...
Because other trees are growing.
But what if it's a specimen tree like the one you...
You're talking, the specimen trees differ from these.
It's an act of nature when it dies of old age.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Or, or, or planning, or...
Well, I disagree with that. I mean, it could be. And I was, I was responsible for the tree at Cary Town Center when we spent $750,000 saving that tree and put lighting protection in it and irrigation, and it was in decline. Trees have a life expectancy. It happens.
What was the radiation change? Was there an intentional radiation from the trees?
There had to be if you're going to meet the floor elevation of the model. There had to be. And so you had to meet that requirement. But trees don't live forever. They're a renewable resource.
But we're designated area that is a tree protected area and it's got trees on it. That's why we found the order.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is, once everyone's gone, it's, to require, again, I just don't get how, you know, 100 years from now, we're all gone. We've done these things. We're looking down from above, thinking how great Pittsburgh has become. And the adjacent property has the same thing going on, and you don't require that, it just doesn't seem right.
We're just doing Shattuck Park right now.
Unless the property owners, you don't think it's right that you've all gotten so many privileges, so I mean...
What privileges have we gotten? Seriously?
Well, let's focus on what, what, as you're all sort of thinking about. I think my point is, I'm not saying you have to replace every tree that goes down in a hurricane, I'm just saying if you have a tree protected...
The specimen trees. Any specimen tree that we got credit for.
If you have a area that set aside for trees, that it should have trees on it, it should have trees on it. It should not have anything else, no other specimen there, because it's something else. To me, once we establish that as an area, we are saying trees are important, and we create these areas so people have trees. And my point is, that if something happens to a specimen tree that's significant, it needs to be replaced. This is a tree area, and that's important to our community, it's important to our health.
Okay, well, let's hold specimen trees to the side of every other, every other area.
Right. So, right, we were having a side conversation about the forest and how the forest behaves, and it's unlikely that hurricane comes through, knocks down a bunch of trees, forest fires, that because it's designated TCA, that then was an obligation on somebody to go plant trees because we know the trees are going to regrow. So if we're talking about specimen trees, maybe we're talking about landscape buffers on parcels that are also performing the work of TCA because they're wide enough to have trees, because that's clearly something that's not forced, or the forest will take care itself. It's a within-land development, and you can put that obligation on land to maintain the fact that they, and a buffer requirement, it got damaged, it still needs to be the buffer fitted. So if we could do that, maybe I'd benefit by discussing trees within properties and these landscape buffers that also serve purposes of TCA. Because there'll be landscape buffers that are 10-foot wide that won't be TCA, they'll just be required to be replanted, and that's a zoning violation. So we could throw TCA in for zoning violation, specimen trees and, and the forest being active.
Commissioner Foley, would you like to see some language that, under a new subsection on replacement of specimen trees that describes what Chuck Smith described...
I think it's one of those things that needs to be in there.
I agree.
And maybe it's the development, so that if you have a site that's developed by someone else, maybe they're responsible. I'm not saying it's something really Shattuck Park, the tree tree, it's just, that's different than that.
So earlier, we had, we touched on what would be included in TCA, and we were all understanding through this language and agreeing, this board and Mr. Smith, that parking lots were not allowed. Is that correct?
Unless there were unusual situations where they met those minimum standards for TCA, like where we've, you've included some of those specimen trees you're parking, you're talking about within the context of the parking lot. But that's not a normal situation, but it is all accounted for here.
And in that case, that exception, draw the line for me, where is that TCA going to fall around a specimen tree in the parking?
It'll fall around a specimen tree in the parking lot. I don't know how to answer that.
Around, around his...
It'll, you asked for, I think, a 1.25, is that right? Some of this, I can go back and look, but 1.25 feet per caliper or per DBH of the specimen tree in protected area. So that land area would be, you'd be talking about, that you would have gotten credit for as TCA.
So the large black walnut, as CCCC comes to mind, in the parking lot there, near the incubator garden, here where we go.
Now, I don't know the root zone area they left around that, I can't speak to that.
In the sample I can say is something we saw today, which is a tree, he showed us this beautiful giant oak tree on a hill, and he went to a great deal of trouble to save the tree. And he did a lot of painstaking, he was elevated, so he had to create different levels to save the tree. And that was clearly just like the tree, and it climbed that whole shop. I guess not all specimen trees are around without moving. I really thought that maybe, maybe it's one of those trees that just totally, it's a tree that...
And what makes those things difficult, I need to get a lot of detail on this, but generally, roads are built on the ridges. Sites fall away from the roads. That tree was up there at the elevation of the road, basically, but the site was much lower because it was just falling away. And in order to meet the other streets behind it, you got this situation where it's like this. So you had to, you had to go, you know, go through some hoops to be able to save that. I don't know, Mr. Bonn has referred to the period that that difference in elevation. You're going to get that a lot. You just have to provide enough. If that elevation, if you protected the root zone area and then you start having that elevation change, then that's what you're trying to do, is the best you can do. Different trees react to that differently.
You're not talking about those trees that have the parking lot going right up the stage?
Oh, no. No, you've got to leave, in that case, I think that was a 48-inch tree or something, and so you were leaving more than 50 feet around all sides of it, this area.
So almost 915, what's the threshold forward here? Should we continue this discussion?
I think we should.
Should we comment? For Jeff or for Chuck?
Could we address my concerns about string buffers doubling up all of the TCA by having some qualitative description of the TCA that makes it clear that it's inclusive?
I need to expand on that, because what, I'll just refer...
To make it clear that it's inclusive of things in addition to the buffers?
In, on page three, section four, number two. It says where the TCA may be located. Riparian buffers are one of those items.
I should, yeah.
So that's all places you can meet it.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is something along the lines of admirable inclusiveness of the role more, unexpected manual, in that it addresses different types of ways to get the gold, and gives you a requirement to go beyond just the usual role more of the end use. As an analogy, how can we be sure, how can this board be reassured that the TCA is not only going to apply riparian buffers, other buffers to, to, like, TCA?
Okay, well, first of all, I'd say that from our perspective, those are the most imported areas. And so that's where you start.
So they're important, and they're required, they're federally protected, and indeed, it's admirable that Shattuck Park, in some cases, extended the buffers.
We doubled the buffers, yes.
So how do we, how do we assure the public that we're going to end up with something in addition to that?
Because the writing in here requires a certain percentage, and those particular lands don't get to that percentage. And secondly, Mr. weather, this is completely driven by Mr. Fioco, but he partly, I'm not going to say that he was of the same belief and came at it from this direction, but he's, the way he's referred to it to me is he wants each site carrying its own weight. And so when you look at non-residential sites, they have to be providing these areas, and those will, those sites will generally not be using those kind of buffer types that you're talking about.
Then non-residential sites, you're going to higher land?
Well, it's not just higher land, but yeah, that's, that's part of it, but it's also smaller, smaller sites that, one of the things we've done here that previously was exempt was two-acre sites. Just about every ordinance, municipal ordinance, from the, where they apply these standards, they reduce the small, they take away the smaller sites from having to meet those requirements. We have put those in there as meeting those requirements. We have put those in there as meeting those requirements. So I think, you know, there, you know, we're talking about some of the warts from your perspective, but there's a number of things that we've added. We've talked about where we had, Durham had 0% for the non-residential sites in the village center, and then we've gone to a 3% for the residential sites, we've gone to a 5% across the board on the requirement there. So, I mean, there's been, I think there are the kind of things you're talking about from the stormwater element that have been embedded into different parts of this.
Yeah, in this case, I'm just, just self-hungry for those examples, to see some GIS for visual examples.
Give me an example of a visual example.
Well, just leading the name Small Area Plans, if we were more along the lines of the sizes of the small area plans that were related to the master plan, that goes to the scale that I am curious about, how this would shape tree cover and then define tree canopy?
Yeah, I'm definitely not sure I follow that, but from the smaller envisioned areas in the master, I don't know what that has to do with this.
Show me a map. You know, one of my first jobs out of college, my boss told me about the rock style of management. Your boss says, bring me a rock, you bring him a rock. He says, yeah, I like that rock, but I don't like this part of it. So, show me some visuals, show me some graphics, show me some GIS analysis. I've tried to give you an idea of the scale. I think you do recall that in the master plan, there was a different scale indicated for the smaller area plans. You can go back to the map yourself. The smaller area plan that was offered and generated in 2018, there's debates from con about the scale of that smaller area plan. I'm not going to go there, but I'm just saying, you want an idea of, you know, it's approximately the same size as the vineyards, but I think this, the original conception of the smaller area plan was a little larger than that. I think that the worst is Zargarpal, it's supposed to be 12 small area plans in the area that was in the land offered in the actual draft, small area plan that was delivered last year, year four. That kind of thing.
You said you didn't want to debate this, so I won't, but I do believe that the larger scale for many of these issues gives you a better frame of reference for making decisions.
They're very, they're very, I understand. But to the point of my remaining concerns about, I very much appreciate your, what you just said about the grain buffers and diversity of different types of tree covered areas. I, I could be reassured with some graphical descriptions. I believe that I could be reassured with graphical questions. And I think the public could appreciate it. Understanding what it is that we're bringing in, understanding how does this text shape what's going to happen on the ground and what will grow in future, what will be preserved today, and so.
I think I said, okay, now I would say that we've given a number of presentations with graphics and through the last, I don't know how many months we've been doing this to get at some of those points.
In the shaping of the process, now that we've got something closer to the final language, and I really appreciate this dialogue that Chuck, I appreciate that you're taking us and responding to concerns. This is my last remaining concern.
Tom, I don't know that you conceivably find precisely how a small area plan will develop from this altitude, only when you get down to the subdivision level and the site plan level, really you're seeing where all bits and pieces are and how they are designated and satisfied. It is interesting to me that when we were originally doing the master plan, there were, I don't know, 27 sections, and those sections were designed simply to state density, this much, this many residents which is here, this square foot is there. And we said, well, we really need to know in a general term how each one of these sections is going to, you know, give us kind of a thumbprint, just a 30,000 elevation look at that thing. And the complaint at that time was, no, 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 you need to do the entire master plan, you can't have small area plans substitute for a complete composite idea of the entire master plan, which I think is untenable. And so we established that each one of these sections would have to have a small area plan, no limit on the number that could be cobbled together. And so what has been, has occurred is that there's been a conflict together of everything north of 64, which I don't know how many sections, maybe eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 sections. But it was something that was seen as really positive, that we were getting a larger look and then would be zooming in from there. And this language in our tree element is like our UDO, and we prepare these guidelines, these regulations, and it's impossible to know how it will apply to every single site. It's just absolutely impossible. Each bit of land can be unique, it will have stream buffers or it won't have stream buffers, and it will use them for tree covered area or it won't. But at the end of the day, we establish these standards that say, for residential development, 20% of that land is going to be covered in trees and it's not going to be on simple kinds of block. And therefore, those lots that have trees are extra, those streets that have street trees are extra. But you can't know precisely how it will affect, but you have a really good idea. That's the art of writing these ordinances, just like we will hopefully be artful in our UDO, in understanding how to create the environment that we desire as a community. Chad Park came along, we didn't, we still don't, presenting ordinances. We're working on a UDO, our ordinances need to be repaired, they need to be modified, modernized. Chad Park came by at a time when we had an opportunity, and we put forth a lot of the community's vision. Stormwater's important to us, public art is important to us, portable housing is important to us, tree coverage is important to us. A really sophisticated stormwater system that has got the respect of professors at NC State. We've, we've got elements that require parks to be dedicated, to be built. We have an element that requires school sites to be donated, fire station sites donated. These are the things that don't have in our UDO that we had to jumpstart for. Chad Park has been done a really, really good job. And that all adds up to create a community. You can't take those things out individually and say, this is not good enough. You've got to look at it in a positive, and I think it's extraordinary and substantial. I would like to ask that Chad Park consider the items put forth tonight, come back next two weeks, hopefully you can respond earlier. It was really helpful to have this latest graph for, I don't know, two weeks maybe. So if it's possible, I'm sure, I realize it's not...
Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
I've written down six items.
Yeah.
And I can agree to five, we can agree to five of them right now. The issue that, so what I would like to do is it possible to, get some sort of vote short of the one remaining issue? Because we keep, we keep adding things that we give, and we forget about all the things that we've given previously, and it just keeps adding and adding and adding.
And there was something taken back, a couple of things taken back in this last graph.
Right. Yeah, and you can, all those things you've got now to be able to consider in context in, in total.
It's a two-way street.
Right.
And, and, you know, when, I think that this board has expressed concerns a lot of times about the language when edits are requested. We hope that the document will come back without additional work, without additional language that wasn't requested, without a change from 1,000 foot to 2,000 square foot understory requirements, you know, so.
But I haven't heard anybody ask us to go back to 1,000.
I thought that was already expressed.
No.
Yes, okay, let's go back to 1,000. Yeah?
So you are now saying you consider the understory tree is more important than originally?
No, no, I'm just saying I don't like changing, you know, it's like a show game, Chuck, it's just not, not fair. It's not fair. I mean, if you expect expedient responses, then you don't change the, change the text and not highlight it and...
I don't think that we have been expecting expedient responses, given the time this has been put into this.
Really don't.
No, really not.
So let's, let's, I personally feel like we need this document. I mean, we need to get moving on this, there's no question.
Yes.
We've been working on this a long time, I don't think anybody wants to drag this out of the table. I, I would like to see finished documents.
I think we can get finished documents if we can identify things, and you said six, I've got five. And what I think we have said is not satisfied with the tree credit and square footage for the trees, and we don't have a staff suggestion to help. So I think Johnson, he doesn't like 2,000, he likes 1,000 for the understory.
I like the original text. Was it 1,000?
1,000, okay. The second item was to increase, no, that's the same item, increase the trees or thanks the trees for the TCPA, or TPA, whether it be a TCPA or not, to a minimum height for understory trees of 15 feet at a tree, and a minimum of 40 feet at a tree for canopy. Work on the definition of TCPA, I think probably could do well for the podium. Fifth item was replanting of trees that TCA lost to damnable death, if those trees are in the perimeter buffers and/or as a specimen tree.
Did you hit over that one and a quarter on the caliber?
Oh, yes, yeah, 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 increase the understory from one inch to one and a quarter in caliber. Yes, good catch.
Perhaps do an appendix list of trees?
Yeah, I had, that's what I listed, to add the list from the landscape element and then the common forest trees references, the source for canopy trees.
Also the language of, um, using local growers is quite helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Local growers, last name?
That's a Chad Kelly.
So when Michael was reflecting on all of his accomplished years, I think to fill in these blanks that were in the master plan that we called the additional elements, I was collecting some thoughts about protected repararian buffers and the idea that, you know, my concern about buffers being used to, to great extent to meet tree coverage requirements. So let me just try. We think about protected repararian buffers in excess of what is needed for tree coverage in one site, and not allowing that to be used to provide tree coverage area in another development site within the same TCPA.
Can I respond to that? In the TCPA, so, let's break this down, TCPA is residential neighborhoods, so the only development sites are either common area or the residential lots. We're already not allowing them in the residential lots, so we can't, it's got to be in common area, wherever that is.
John, so I think you're concerned that a TCPA will do more than it's required and allow another TCPA a less big credit for this amount?
Well, that's one concern that I've heard, the idea that someone's going to use up the allocation in the early years or, yeah, what are we going to do in the later years? But, no, I'm just, I remain concerned, this is just one thing that I can identify and articulate, because I have identified this through this completely, as I wish that I had it produced here, not being a planner. I am concerned that buffers, all the different types of buffers, will be the majority of what comprises the tree covered area within the TCPA, and that the TCPA will be drawn intentionally to loosen tracts that have lots of buffers and are difficult to build. So, you know, I hear your desire to prioritize protection of buffers, that is admirable. The federal government protects the buffers, and you're in compliance with the law, and I appreciate that. To the extent that you're willing to go beyond that, that is admirable, and we should, we should have uplifted that. I think that we can go more, and I'd like to see more clusters of trees retained for us outside of those buffers. Yeah? Not applied? So?
Do you have to hear the weigh-in?
No. I think, I will have to say that. Well, I think I, I think I already said I wouldn't be redundant, but we, if we pulled in additional repararian buffer or well, or federally protected areas into a TCPA to meet the requirements of a TCPA, which is, is that sort of where you're going? of a TCPA, which is, is that sort of where you're going with what you said? Okay, if we do that, then there are areas that we now have to meet TCA within a TCPA that don't get to use those areas. And so we're gonna end up in the same place, whether they're part of this TCPA or they say part of this TCPA and we didn't try to move things around.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I just like to see it, I'd like to see the quantification in the graphical.
It's just simple math.
Each TCPA may stand on its own and so, John, what I thought was recognizing as a risk you did not want to expose the town to was the idea that you had a TCPA that was rich in TCA because it maybe had a really good plug point, really good buffer and it was far in excess of the 20% required for this residential development, it was 40% in the year and that this TCPA would then do 5% and take credit for that overage in this TCPA.
I understand.
And the way it's set up is this TCPA sets itself up, establishes that amount of TCA and it's done. You can go poach from this TCPA.
I don't hear you saying something different, which is...
Well, I was...
Okay.
Yeah.
What I hear you saying is that you feel like it's not enough just in the, the required buffer that it should exceed what's already required.
Yes.
So then what you're saying is the percentages are too low?
Yes.
And what we've shown you is that they're consistent with every municipality that has a tree protection areas.
That's a familiar conversation.
Well, Mr. Bioco's is still true, just like it was the last time we said it.
And those other, those other municipalities are not, well, we view as exceptional and they are existing brownfield developers.
And we talked about that too. These are, these are tree cities, they have committed X number of dollars to be tree cities and be part of their program and they are absolutely committed to being great tree cities. That's who you're comparing this to and it stands consistent with those, so it is not saying that we are less than they are and that you think that you should have more than they, I mean, it's very consistent. And then, and the things we've covered here go beyond, I mean, we've, we've passed with the standards that we've been adding these last few weeks and months, we've gone past what they do.
And those tree cities are so deeply committed because they recognize intense and rich value of tree cover in terms of energy savings, in terms of human health, in terms of all your belief and...
Do we agree with that?
They are struggling to retain and get back that tree cover and we are losing it. We are losing it. It's inevitable that your development will approach upon the existing tree cover.
As will every development that develops in a city.
We're not talking about other developments, Chuck. I just am trying to advocate for the passion in this community or going way beyond.
And we have.
Of any other tree city is done.
We think we have. And you get the, you get the vote and decide if that's the case.
Existing forests and I would like to see more than just buffers go to tree coverage. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I think my summary is assisted, given what you've added, what Mr. Bioco stated, that's, I got that written down, is that where we are?
Is there the one you did not agree with?
We haven't, we haven't agreed to any, most, every, I mean, we gotta come back with the document that you read and as Mr. Bonner said, you gotta look at it in context and in totality to see.
And in that bringing back, it will only change the difference that we talked about.
Well, I, you know, I understand why you're asking that and I would love to say that, but sometimes when we get into this, we find that when we touch this particular issue that's connected to four other places and believe you, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that, I would, but I can't tell you, I can't, cannot give you a certainty that it won't happen in some places.
Or if you do, that you would disclose it in a memorandum?
Oh, what we've done previously is give a summary of the things that changed and then a red line review of where they changed, but I understand, I mean, I agree with your point.
So, I agree to the things we talked about, that's the point, I hope you've gotten over here.
Well, yeah, I mean, most of these I think we could agree to. I mean, I'm sitting here, I've gotta go back and, I mean, I'm not the one making decisions here, so we've gotta go back and talk about it because when you start, again, you start adding all these things up at, when you add it to what we've done previously, that's a... But I just, I really weren't, this is it. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, we can agree to everything, but we're gonna run a black ball, as they remember.
Chuck, I wrote down some of these, but could you just briefly go over your six items there? Just briefly?
Sure.
All right.
The one, they started with, yeah, so we're, to increase the minimum canopy tree height to 40 foot minimum height with a variety, also wanting a variety of heights. Secondly, that the understory trees have a minimum mature height of 15 feet with a variety of mature heights and that they, you also increase the one inch caliper to one and a quarter inch caliper to be consistent with the landscape element, I believe. Then add a reference to the, as the landscape element did, a reference to the list of canopy trees. And also refer to the Forest Service document of common forest trees. Then we've made an attempt to rewrite the TCPA language, so it'll be something close to that. And then the replacement issue of dealing with two types of replacement, primer buffers and specimen tree, individual specimen trees. And then finally, the changing the understory tree credit back from 2,000 square feet to one tree per 1,000 square feet. And I guess, I guess the last is not quite as, not quite as, I don't know, I'll put this, I'll say clear, I don't think I'm clear on what you were talking about at the end, but looking at, making sure we understand where the possible solutions to providing TCA come from beyond just riparian buffers.
And also the piece about getting trees from local growers.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I had written that down as part of the, the, refer to the landscape element and the common forest trees, but that's in that same, that will be in the same area.
And that's a lovely chat, Chuck.
So Western Wake is not good enough?
That's true.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck. So, we have substantial business remaining and I'd like to, for a very brief break, five-minute break?
Motion by John Bonner, definitely by Mike Bioco, the favorite five-minute break, please, Rob.
Thank you. Wouldn't anyone care for...
Mercy be on this.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike, air bud.
We're back in. Is there a motion presented? Someone was... By Ken LaFalle, definitely by Michael Bioco, does he think anything I... The motion carries, we're back in session, we're on item number three of old business, which is sewer allocation.
We'll shift gears then.
Yes. Thank you. Now, do you have a, a view of our...
So, yes, I'm before you tonight because we've had several requests for sewer allocation and in the last couple of months I have begun to do the update that is typically done around the time of year in the spring, where we take the unit formation from the previous year and update the average annual flow rate to reflect the previous 12 months. So, 2018 numbers are what we are now using. Previously, we were using 2017 numbers. So, up until the March request that I brought before you was using 2017 information for the average annual, average annual. So, what I've got before you was, within your packet, was an explanation of what does that do, how does that update the status of where we are? And so, the chart on the screen, and they are a little wider than I did this, and the, I was trying to include the information that we previously talked about of the flow from 2017 and then what the update is. The biggest change that happened is that in the last 12 months, we've had an increase to 502,942 gallons per day. That is a fairly significant increase. A lot of that is due to the high level of rain that we've had and the amount of additional flow by our treatment plants, because we may have had those kind of events. The good news is, is that the information that we continue to talk about this 80%, 90% rule, the 80% rule that we're working on, is based off of that number and we still are okay. We are at 57%. We are well under the 80% threshold and we will continue to monitor that as we go into the next year. The other thing that happens is anything that was previously permitted but not yet tributary begins to make its way to now it is recognized in that actual flow. So, we begin to move things where they belong. We move things that were tributary but not yet permitted but not yet tributary over to actual flow. We move things that were allocated but now permitted, we move those. So, the next line on the, the chart on the screen recognizes that, that difference that has occurred. So, previously, we had about 51,000. Now, we've got 113,000. So, that is a pretty good increase. That came from some of the allocations that you had planned in over the last year that have now been permitted. That makes up about 15% of what our total picture is that the state is looking at. The total paper flow is the combination of these two. So, these two together are 615,982, which comes to be in about 82% of the total capacity of our plant, so the 750,000. The limit that the state is worried about making sure we stay under is that we don't submit permit that exceed 100%. So, that 82 doesn't need to fall under. So, with that understanding, we have also done at a tailbone, we have allocated. committed are 118,000. If we were to use the full capacity of the plant, we have about 15,924 gallons per day available. We have previously been using the 80% and 90% of our plant capacity as our thresholds for what, what we've been allocating and kind of as a guide of monitoring how many allocations we have. We have surpassed both of those. We have surpassed the 90% already, we have surpassed the 80% at this point. So, we're at a point that we need to have a conversation about decisions on allocations going forward because we have several requests that have come in recently that are at the appropriate time to start bringing before you. This list was about 26,000 gallons per day. I will share that, in my safe request, the developers for that site and along with Chatter Park have reached out to the town staff and offered that in light of the fact that there are some decisions that you guys have on the agenda later tonight, that this decision for their particular allocation can wait till their site plan stage, which should be later this summer. There'll be submitting in the summer, coming in probably early fall. And so, they have offered that as a way to help this conversation, that they understand the limited nature of our sewer availability today and the fact that there's some decisions that will begin to help us move forward, going forward, that has caused a delay over the last year, so that sewer projects have a progress. So, I do offer that, but this full list was about 26,000. The other requests that are in this list are the project for retail project on A-93 East Street. That project is on the agenda later in the meeting. I've got it for discussion at this point, but I would recommend you just roll that into your discussion at the earlier decision at the time of that item if you choose to allocate that sewer. The Chatter Park Information Center had a request for 300 GPD. That is expected to go to the Chatter Park Old North State facility. That there, there is an opportunity, it could come to our plant, but it would require some additional infrastructure that's not yet been submitted. So, if you wanted to grant that additionally upon it being when the construction drawings come in or go ahead and just acknowledge the fact it's coming and continuing in the process, we are trying to align the sewer allocation requests with site plan approval, but if there's a request to do, or desire to do something different with that, that is up to you all. And then the last request is one that is associated with zoning compliance. This is an existing building, Main Street Station, it is a fit-up for a unit in that building, it is a request for a salon to go into that space and they need about 825 gallons per day. So, those are the requests that we have. In the process of helping to give you all the permission to work through this kind of question and decision, we know that we have several things that are pending. We've got the Chatter Park's plant that is well under construction, but is needing some additional approvals with the discharge of that facility that require an update, our permit is already in the works. So, there's some things associated with permit renewal, the NPS permit the town has that needs to be updated in order for that facility to be fully operational. We know that the Stanford Forest name, another project that's underway, is pending approval. Both of those items are pending, the decisions that are affected by the settlement agreement that you've got before you later this afternoon, this evening. I guess we're gonna walk our afternoon at this point. So, the, the consideration at this point is, do you want to continue allocating up to 100%? There could be an opportunity to have a conversation about allocating more than 100%. That is something that from a town level, we could have procedures for that. We would want to be clear in what our recommendation is of that, that if we allocate more than 100% and all of those came in for permits, we would not be able to sign the permit application to go to the state beyond that 100% limit. So, we know that, that these projects do not all happen at the same time, there are changes that happen over the next year or more. So, there's, there's some risks, but this kind of gives you the, the level of risk. If you were to choose to go to 105%, it would give you about 53%. If you were to choose to go to 105%, it would give you about 53,000 gallons per day available to allocate. If you were to go to 110%, it would give you about 90,000 gallons per day available. Another point that I would recommend we consider, probably in the near future, is beginning to set the allocation into two categories. The tributary flow to the town system, or flow that would go to the Chatter Park facility. The fact that Chatter Park facility is not able to discharge yet and is not fully able to function, at this point, Chatter Park is requested not to make that separation yet. But I think that that is a reasonable thing for us to do once some of these investments start getting a little bit further along. Once we start to do that and identify the things that are going to each, that would open up some available capacity in what we could all paper have indicated in the current listing of allocation. Another thing that's been done in the past, and I don't know if it is the best idea at this stage because of all the impacts of it, but something that has been done before is going to each individual request, or if there's any gallons per day. There's basically really some information, like a 15 unit subdivision, or about a $5,000 to $6,000 gallons per day retail facility. You will see that there is things we've had requests from a non-residential side of things, where $6,000 might not go very far. And subdivisions generally have been coming in and greater than 15 units at a time. And we probably for lots of reasons, we'll subdivision spaces to be a little bit larger than that. But that is an opportunity we have to allocate this in. Another thing that I think is important is that we do establish what our guidelines are, how we go about allocations, and make sure that it's something that we can provide to applicants of the procedure of what we're thinking or what we operate under. I've put together some just draft language to begin to put some of those thoughts together. Some of the important I still need to know is, are we interested in the 100% limit? Do we need to have any other of these items considered so we can roll those into it as well? I do want to just kind of point out, we do have other pending requests that probably will be here in the next two to three months that are about 18,000. And then we have continued to want to just keep on your radar that the Town Hall facility will need sewer, not right away, but in the future. And the 2,000 gallons per day is an overall full build-out kind of concept for that facility. So being cognizant of the fact that we do have town structures or town facilities that will need some flow in the future. So that is the items for consideration. I would open it up for discussion, questions, if there's more information I can provide you, and then we can conclude any other steps.
Thank you very much, Ms. Goodson. Very early in your presentation, you mentioned that there was one applicant that was willing to petition. Please reiterate.
It was the applicant.
So that's the 24,000 gallons per day?
That is correct. They had a previous request in for a larger amount, and when we highlighted that we did not have that much available sewer, they reduced the amount. They've actually reduced it twice in an attempt to align closer to what we had available. They do not need it right away, but there will be a point at which we need to sign a utility. We've signed a utility permit for an initial work, but there will be a point at which we need to sign a utility permit for that flow. And so there will be a point at which we need to get to that stage. But it is not something that they felt that they can't have right now, but they do want to be sure that you understand they have it needed and it is still pending.
Are there questions for this?
From the tributary perspective, we're DMR. State's looking for us not to exceed 8%?
That is correct.
And back up to 8%?
So we're at 67% at this point. The 502,000 number is the one that is measured against that requirement.
So we've got technically 14% of the plant capacity, which is 75,300, maybe 75,000 would be 10%.
The 80% threshold is 600,000. 90% would be 675,000.
And we can go tributary to the 90% once we have a permit?
It's my understanding that once we have permits enhanced in the line of saying that we're in additional capacity, we could go higher with the average annual DMR information.
We have the ability to discharge ground number 1.25 million.
Correct.
Our plant is 75,750,000. Does the permit for Old North State plant, which would discharge to 100%, allow us to go to 2% to 90%?
I do not know the answer to that, but we can find out if that would allow us to proceed further.
And the other restriction, so that's actual physical flow that you measure whether you report to the state. The other number that they're kind of watching, I guess, is how much is permitted as a projection of future tributary. And they want to limit the permitted flow to 100% of the plant.
Correct.
So then the question that I have is, I know that from the time you get a permit to the time it actually is tributary, there's a lot of construction happening.
That is correct.
From the time it's allocated to the time it's permitted to the time it's tributary, it's a much longer period of time. Trying to analyze whether to go to 110% banking on the fact that Sanford and Old North State, which Old North State is pretty far down the line, can come online and allow us to then retroitary those figures. I mean, permit is tributary a couple of years typically.
The construction type frame to build the lines and then see if we're limited.
Build the lines and then have something go vertical to then discharge to that one. Vertical being building.
There's clearly a progression of time that's passing through to these various stages.
I know we had a policy that was just described for us, I think, 2005 to 2010 or so, when there was kind of a moratorium place, and it was just being really built out. And then, I don't know, three, four years ago, we had estimate to get 90,000 gallons left. We had adopted a different policy where we said, okay, 30 will go to commercial, 30 will go to residential, 30 will be the discussion board. And I like that, I think that 110%.
It's a very similar number.
Yeah. If we don't do something, we're just going to stop right now.
Elizabeth, do we have to do any kind of upgrades at the plant to go to 105 or more?
100, 105?
We would not be able to, the state would not allow us to submit permits over 100% without expansions and all the various things to the plant to be done. But from a town allocation perspective, that's how we do business, and it's the risk that we are assuming, the fact that there is time in this process. So yes, there's nothing that would be required from the state perspective on that. We would be monitoring the fact that we cannot sign a permit and send it to the state that would exceed that 100%.
So applicants would know they've got an allocation without guarantee to sign a permit? Would have to make that up?
If we go over 100%, I think that is definitely something that we would have to make very clear to anybody who requested at this point, and probably those that have pending, or allocations approved but not yet permitted, for them to be able to do that as well. But it's a fairly finite list of who's doing that 118,000 amount of allocations to be created.
It's also more, I would, the calculations of paper flow are usually elevated from what actually ends up being tributary at the end of the day. So when you talk about a gallon of paper flow, it's not always a gallon. I'm of the opinion that all the work is done, Old North State, Sanford line coming online in a couple of years. These are things we try to continue to allocate, not necessarily with guarantee of permit, but at least let some family. And I would be comfortable with that. I don't think we would get.
What type of risk are there even going to 110% of the plant? I think that it's the magnitude of us settling an applicant at a site plan stage, that they have approval for their project to progress. And if their super permit has not been submitted before we hit that 100% permitted water cap, us holding the permit, not being able to sign the permit, and that applicant coming back to us and being concerned or bothered by that expectation. But if we made it clear that if they would get it available as soon as it's available, that we have expanded capacity, that would be the answer that we have. But if we are not progressing with the line of Sanford and the Old North State plant is not able to get all the necessary approvals, those are our tools to have the additional capacity at this point.
I think another option would be honestly be able to operate zero flow permit with the condition that you don't get the flow until it's available. So if you wanted to adapt to it, it happens that you get a permit. You don't want the flow to be, you get a permit for zero flow, and stipulates the condition on which you can then get some flow.
I might have to make it clear, if I had to put on a weight.
But it's more than a weight. From the town's perspective, that's what it is. But from a customer standpoint, yes, he's going to be spending money.
Right.
And when people spend money, that raises all sorts of issues for them.
And they're at the risk and they choose to do it, I think you'd have to be really clear.
I'm not sure.
With 100, 110, I'm not.
There would be a limit on what permits might be available to an applicant like that in terms of, you might be able to clear a site, but I'm not sure you're going to be able to build any houses without a permit. You're not going to get building inspection permits.
But the need for utilities to be applied per to subdivided lots will be a requirement. It allows them to make some progress, but it would not ultimately allow them to build houses. There is a risk of that.
You're incurring, I mean, you're engendering expectations on the behalf of these people that you may or may not be able to satisfy, or you may not be able to satisfy in the timeframe that they're interested in being satisfied. I mean, as far as your concern, you'll have a lift. So if you're going to go higher, maybe you want to consider whether this is for residential or this is for commercial, first come, first served, you know, is there a limit? You're going to only do small ones, not big ones? You know, there's more to it than just saying you're going to take up to 110%.
I think that's what this policy is trying to address a lot.
It needs to adjust the existing guidelines. But the first come, first served is something that I have written into the guidance so far. The desire to accommodate existing structures that are acting present as first in the project that needs a new extension permit, if there's a division to distinguish those. If there's present conflict for all of those.
So that second item you just mentioned, you've already been articulating to applicants? Or no? Existing structures, cover, that needs?
Everybody's request is unique right now. Every request is brought before you.
I thought you said you had first come, first served, and then I thought the second item was in addition to that policy.
The things I've written into the guidelines that are before you are the requests are first come, first served. That's generally how we have operated to date. It's first come, first served, and then kind of follows when the project will come before you, so that it's running in line with when the project's getting approval. But the zoning compliance, when they are a process that they are generally delayed because of the timeframe to get to the board, because they're a return process. I definitely would welcome the feedback of what kinds of things you would like to go to the guidelines. It's something that the town attorney and I can continue to work together on counts of best practice. What I've put through here is really just some beginning steps of that, and whether or not it needs to be a formal policy or some other type of document, we can work through what the best way is to accommodate that.
I have a credit night, I think it's kind of kept your bones. One thing that did jump out at me is that sewer allocation requests would be accepted with middle rezoning requests. I think depending on what type of rezoning request, the general rezoning request, it's hard to define what that could be, what it would be, so it's too speculative in my opinion. But the conditional use zoning, which is exceptional for the project.
And I think that was what prompted the thought of a rezoning here. Not a general rezoning, but specifying what the desire is, that it's closer in line with a site plan, or a lot of things have a two-step process with the Chatter Park projects. They have things that come in for a construction drawing. I'm afraid if you wait till construction drawings, that's when the utility permits are needing to be run. So site plan, I believe, is the site subdivision plan is really the right place if the project requires that, to create to come in. And then something's wrong with rezoning compliance because there's no other step that they have to. But yes, I don't mind changing the rezoning. And if it's a special use or special, I can't remember the terminology we use, but if it's the one that is associated with site plan, then that would catch that as well. Or feel comfortable making a recommendation for a limitation?
Well, I was just thinking the principles in my head, because I feel like our town coffers are being strained with the workloads we've got. My first thought is what will bring the tax revenue fastest? That leads me to believe that you might consider prioritizing commercial, commercial, non-residential, commercial industrial, commercial office, I don't know, just thinking about that. And yet there are also places that are in need of greater density residential development in town. I'm not sure how many benefits those bring with them versus costs or new demands on services. But I guess I'd like to understand, Ms. Goodson, just a little bit. But I guess I'd like to understand this just a little bit better, the constraints and the numbers that you've laid out, if I may relay the answer to Mayor's question. Thought that I'm seeing here numbers that even with the Mosaic Area A plan, we would still not reach the 100%. I mean, I got the 18,000 on the second page plus 2,000 at the town hall, plus everything on the first page.
Which is about 26,000. So a little over 48, 50 is just kind of the ballpark, what we have available, 15,000 to get to the 100%.
How do you go from, talking about annual average flow?
Yes, annual average flow, which is the actual flow at the plant that was recognized in last year's data, so 12-month average. So the annual average flow is now 500 and previously it was 400.
25.
405-ish, yes. And so it was a pretty big jump there. But yes, we have that actual flow. And then you have things that are permitted and are actually flowing, so they're absorbed into that actual flow number. And then there's the rest of it that's committed but not yet contributory. And so that's the middle row. And then the last row is the addition of the two. So the total of things that are committed through the state's process, either actual flow or things that are permitted, the combination of those two items are where we are with the 600 and 15.
Elizabeth, you may have already spoke on this, but would you look at possibly Old North State taking on flow?
They are pending the tail, updating our NPDS permit, and that has been delayed with the discussion about the EIS and the discussion you have had later.
And have we heard anything from the NTS EQ that would approve our revolving loan fund application? At least that allow that to move forward?
No, sir, that's tied up in this as well.
Any indications?
I can talk about that later.
Do you feel, James, that you feel that we should be going beyond 100%?
According to the Wood and Company estimate of the timeframe for the force main, assuming that all things fall into place, I think it would be fall before there was any approval for the, to authorize bids on the force main. So a year and a half to build it. So you're talking about a considerable period of time before the force main gets effective in terms of that flow. So, you know, the Old North State plant can get finished, but there's nothing hooked up to it yet. So, I mean, the fact that it can treat all this capacity until there's a connection with something in Chatham Park that's flowing to it, I mean, it's there, but it's not doing a lot of good until there's some growth and development in Chatham Park. Now, that may come too, but again, that may be a year from now before that's ever effective. So you're talking about a considerable period of time from now and whenever there is, you know, some flow that can go somewhere, and it's going to go to Old North State before it's ever going to go to Santa Fe. So, you know, you all make promises to the public all the time, and if you don't deliver on your promises, you get busted. And so how much of that do you want to subject yourselves to? And how long do you want to hold these people, you know, sort of hostage? It used to be that you would allocate capacity and they had to use it or lose it. In this case, you're going to allocate capacity and they can't use it. So it's just going to require, you know, a longer and longer list that somebody's got to keep up with. And then when the blessed day comes where you can turn on the pipe, somebody's going to have to notify them that they can go forward from there. So, you know, it just depends on how much risk and what you all want to take on.
Yeah, and we've been, our DMR is in 400,000 gallons range for years.
And it may be quicker to fix that than it is to do the other.
Well, that's what I mentioned at our last meeting about making investments in INI. Corrected that and getting a lot of bang for buck because 100,000 gallons is probably rainwater.
A large portion of it has been.
So growth.
There was a small amount that would be actual sewer flow, but there was a large amount that would be rainwater.
And for us to exceed the 80% contributory flow, that's 97 valid gallons. And we've seen growth in the town and we haven't seen the DMR move except for this last year when it was extraordinary with West High Plant. What's the DMR and the average annual, the information for average annual? Daily rainfall?
No, it's.
Monitoring report?
Daily monitoring report.
So every day.
It is the report that is taken at the plant of the actual flows today and their average.
800,000 gallon tanks over there, you probably as well have a little bit throughout, so some of the DMRs probably, well, what we're doing is 500,000 gallons probably coming out first. In case it's been a million.
Hasn't, that they have gone over that. Which happens occasionally when there's high rate events in lots, just so I'm sure. It is not an unheard of thing, but we want to minimize that, and that's part of this whole process of monitoring that we don't exceed the state permit, that's what the state has over the state.
Have we seen over a million since those INI investments of 2018 or 2019?
I don't remember all the numbers exactly off the top of my head, but I don't think we saw millions in the rain event this past year, but I think we saw in excess of, in excess of 700.
Sounds like those were big rainy investments, going back to infiltration issues, or those leaks.
I think there's a couple of things that clearly are part of this whole picture. It's making sure we're mindful of the INI issue and that we are making progress on that continually. I think it is making progress on the improvements that we know we've got in the pipeline for expansion and additional capacity and making progress on getting our permits approved for the various expansions and extensions that are pending. Those things currently are in a holding pattern, and once they are no longer in that holding pattern and we know better what that timeline looks like, then we will know what the, this window will start to be a more finite period of time that we're talking about. Right now, today, at this point in the meeting, we do not know all, but on the next steps. So I would kind of summarize that the couple of items that are needing probably attention sooner rather than later, and it does not mean you have to act on them right now, they just at the point of a decision. The 893 East Street will be on the agenda with the latest meeting, where they are getting their site plans presented to you, hopefully, for you to move forward. The sewer would be something that needs to accompany that. The Mosaic for the developer's offer could be held till a later time when we have more information about the status of some of these approvals and things needing a little bit more on that. And I would recommend they come in with their site that's coming in later this summer for a consideration at that point of where we are at that stage. The information center, that project is something they need to kind of keep moving. There is infrastructure between there and their plant that has to be constructed. There's also infrastructure, if they were to shift and come to our plant, that would have to be designed and constructed. The line that is to their plant is at least under review and mostly through the process. So that is, that is what is going to, is anticipated to go to their plant, the Old North State plant. And then the last one is an existing building that is ready to, the mainstream section, ready to pull building permit as soon as this decision can be made.
Well, what do other commissioners think, and Mayor, think about the idea of prioritizing a policy or a goal of prioritizing based on occasions for town budget? It was the next. And that's why I thought it was a pretty good idea to have a portion of it set aside for the board's discussion. In the past, I thought it worked well. And we had third, 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 and that kind of gave you the ability to weight these concerns, just going in and other considerations.
That split from third, third, third was also partnered with a limitation on each request, was it? Not at that time?
I don't believe that it was. I don't recall what it was.
I would say it would just be allowed to go up to 30,000, a particular example of each type or a potential to be one of the categories if you wanted to give that weight.
I think Paul, we do presently kind of say folks use it or lose it when we approve site plan and say, if your site plan expires, so does your allocation. I think as long as we're informing the public as to what the risks are and if they knowingly take on the risk or not, I don't think we're doing that in the service of some people who would want to go ahead and have a zero flow project, banking on the fact that there will be a solution in time for that. And I don't want to make that call for anybody, but I wouldn't want to deny that opportunity to them.
What about allocations that we've already posed or allowed and they haven't done anything?
Yeah.
That's been more than a year and gave them, and gave them an extension. We should go back and either, yeah, exactly, take it back or whatever they can do.
I think we gave my dear accession.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we did, but under these circumstances right here. Shut up.
All right. You recently did that for one suggestion.
Yeah.
Mills South, Town Tron sort of project that she considered as the two separate issues. She made a recommendation to approve the extension of the plan approval in the sewer. You did not approve the extension, and so if they need to come forward or are ready to move forward, then that is something that I'll come back and we'll request again. So that is, that is something that we have, we've offered prior to now, knowing that we were, we were getting tight on this, we don't just worry about it. It is getting tighter. The updated DMR information will be distributed to the next discussion.
We don't have any more plans or something like that that we already gave allocation for.
The full amount of what we've given allocation for is represented in the 118,000 number on the chart.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that's already had there one year for a site plan.
We're watching that closely. If they are still staying active, they've got construction drawings, they're actively under construction, that those are the things that are, that they're showing the momentum that they are still building, then they are still active. If they stop that activity or do not continue in the process, still submit building permits or whatever the case may be, if there's a year gap of any activity, then that would be when we would come before the US head the plan is about to expire and there needs to be a decision about, if they requested an extension, we would go to them first so when it did not expire, and then come before you with that request. But what we have been watching that pretty closely on what have approached that timeframe and the ones that are currently on the list, I feel comfortable, they're still active projects. But if there's someone that will be nearing that time to check again.
So I only heard from one commissioner. Anybody else want to weigh in on the idea of kind of a principle we might use for approving or disapproving or delaying, not just delaying certain allocation requests? Principle I offered is impact on town coffers, if we will, if we're positive.
The only real problem with that is that you get a request one at a time and.
Well, we have some now.
Some now, yes, but as you go forward, you'll have one at a time. So you won't, I mean, you're not going to be able to compare it to anything else. You just have to deal with it. And it could be commercial and it could add, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to the tax base and you could have, you know, a retrofit for something that's in town for 800 gallons, and that would only add less. So, I mean, to say that, I mean, if you compare apples and apples, sure, that makes a good point, but they're not going to happen that way. They're not going to come in that way. They're going to come in one at a time.
I have a question, when you first come, first served or?
We haven't seen any retrofits that are residential. So that would fit into the commercial and non-go office category that I'm suggesting for our town.
Accept.
Oh, and that's unfortunately the one that I'm seeing that would be short shrifted. I think we can do everything, bearing in mind the patience from developers of Mystic area, and bearing in mind the necessary time required to connect the information center to any infrastructure that might actually deliver flow. I think that we can do all of the rest of these that are listed on this demo and fit under the 15,000, I'm coming up with 14,800, 29,000, if we leave off the Roberts Run subdivision. That only just takes care of what we're talking about tonight, but. And it does include residential, especially the dancing subdivision.
I look for now, that one is currently out of the cycle with where you and him have gaps in fundamentals, so we're expecting it to come back in, but the exact timeline of when they'll request that will be before you go to plan to request that. I don't think that time frame will matter at this point. Don't do exactly what you just described, but just so you kind of know, that one's a little bit, probably further out than July right now.
Well, it does, what does it mean that we can first come, first served? That's why I'm hinting that maybe the Roberts Run subdivision would be short shrifted for this particular allocation decision.
Yeah, they're not, they're not before you tonight. I just keep that as the ones that I have pending that are coming in the next few months. They should probably be coming before you in July.
The request tonight is maybe just.
Yes, yes. Request tonight is just the three at this point of Mosaic.
One thing generally, this commissioner thinks that I would, I'm willing to go to 110%, like our policy, that divvies the 90 to those categories, or should run that old spread, board spreading. And continue to work on this policy in the next couple of weeks. And a portion of, keys of this policy being the acknowledgement to the metering of the risks of allocation for a, and the potential risks that they would take on. And they really choose to do so around portion.
I'm going to try and make some answers. First come.
I think it is.
First come. I'm going to, I'm sorry, if they'll turn like one hundred percent, it would take you a little while.
And that...
I would say, it doesn't mean I would do some percentage to we get another, just the same, but the right one.
That hundred and eighteen thousand is not in a contributory for a while, and I would say quite a couple of years. And I don't think it's an accurate number, a representative number, because that's honestly inflated when they design, calculation, actually they're built typically flows less. I think there's more buffer in there, which is why most of the ones that I'm looking at. Is it hundred and eighteen translate to something less or maybe a fair amount less?
It did one hundred and ten percent.
I definitely think we should go the way, say zero flow.
Some folks could opt for that. It's either we're not going to sign the permit, or we'll sign a permit for zero flow and you know the risk and the condition under which you will or will not actually get flow.
From a staff perspective, I do want to just point out, what we do is zero flow permit. I am doing at least twice the review because they do have to come back in for modification. We are doing that when it's appropriate and we will do it when it's appropriate, but just recognize that, that I don't want that to be, you know, automatic, because that also further to the town attorney's point, it lets them put infrastructure in the ground that they've spent money on and they have no way to actually finish the project. So there is, for a short period of time, that would be very much what's probably going to need to happen. But I do just, in the sake of everybody understanding what that means, it does mean we are touching that component more than once and more than what would be, there are modifications that happen, but they're more than notable amount of modifications.
If they don't know what to do, it's give it to them and then just let them know, stipulate that. It may not ever come or it may come later, a lot later than anticipated, but we have to, there's, we would have to certainly stipulate that in writing.
I think it's, I think it's in the form of a letter that, that they go to their, documenting their approval and what that's specific to. And it's reaching out to the various parties of that hundred and eighteen thousand, I assume already have, have requests previously.
And the person would hate for these to have to revise something a second time like that. That's just, we aren't so sure that too.
It's a part, it's a part of the process, but just recognizing that we want to limit that ex没有办法.
Now, we definitely wanted to certainly understand that thoroughly, because I know a lot of times people, they, they don't quite understand things. Just not making a concern.
So we're ready for a plan, under six hundred and ten?
Based on that, once we have a policy in place, we look at a revised policy at our next meeting.
Probably the next meeting or up until the one following. All right. Probably last year, the next meeting, so. You can discuss it amongst yourselves if you'd like, but if I need to be in front, then I will recommend the next one. I may, I may have drafted that.
Motion is being made, five hundred and ten percent limitation with, without guarantee of permit or permit for zero flow, with the condition on which this is to be released or denied, I guess.
It comes with the thirty percent, that would, was part of that motion?
Thirty, thirty, thirty.
Okay.
What's, what's the precise energy we're looking at, a hundred and ten percent?
I think that's approximately ninety, it's within plus or minus a hundred or so of that. I just stated approximately.
Ninety thousand?
Ninety thousand, sorry. Yes.
Your second, Mr. Michael Fiocca's motion.
Second.
Wilson Foley has seconded, and those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
With that decision reviewed, we're making decisions on any other requests. The only one that's not on the agenda further in the meeting is the Main Street Station.
And that's because it's a zoning compliance, there's no site plan associated.
That there will not be a site plan.
Motion by Michael Fiocca, seconded by Wilson Foley, to approve Never's Monday.
I don't know what the numbers are here, I'm just looking at the screen. But all of them.
Eight, eight ninety-three, Street, Chatham Parkway, Commission Center, in Main Street Station.
Those who care, please indicate by saying aye.
I have one more quick question, please, just really quick. Are you aware of any other municipalities or towns that may, that have done that in terms of...
I'm not aware of any municipalities that allocated this level of specificity of the board acting on every request. This is a very unique situation. It is something that's absorbed into the normal business practice of approvals of plans and that there's not really an entitlement to it until you've got to come anyplace. I think it's wise that we're doing what we're doing with the limitation we've got and to be clear and informing our community of what the status is, that it is a unique situation. So it's hard to, we've looked for other policies, Jeff and I both have received our own things with the model after, and there's just not quite the same situation that we're...
Next item on the agenda is zoning text amendment, and Victoria Baynes will lead in that discussion for downtown Overlake District Sub Act.
Thank you, Mayor. This is zoning text amendment two zero one nine dash zero two. The Town Board of Commissioners is requesting an amendment to the downtown Overlake District text in the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance. The request is to amend the subacts in the district by the addition of the following text. Properties within the district which are used or zoned as non-residential and are adjacent to or across the street from property zones B four shall be subject to the same front yard requirements and corner lots, side yard requirements per note six for property zones B four as depicted in five point four table area yard and height requirement and five point four point one notes to the table of area yard and height requirement. And here's the map of the downtown Overlake District, it's showing the zoning district and the hatch parcels are the ones that would be affected by this amendment. A public hearing was held on April twenty-second, one citizen chose to speak in favor of the amendment. The planning board reviewed this request at their May sixth meeting. The board promised text amendment to be consistent with our future land use plan and voted unanimously unanimously to recommend approval on a vote of five to zero. Is there any questions?
So approved would be a consistent process.
Consistency statement and then the group.
Make a motion to approve the consistency statement that this is consistent.
Motion by Michael Fiocca, seconded by Phil LeBaldwin. Those who favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Out of the ordinance, Michael Fiocca moved that Phil LeBaldwin seconded, those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. I have one little question, and that is how, how does this impact sidewalks?
The sidewalk? Sidewalks would be in the right of way, so, or they should be in the right of way, so it shouldn't impact the sidewalks at all.
Perfect, thank you. Next item is the annexation request for section five, Chatham Parkway. Victoria?
This is annexation two zero one nine dash zero one. Chatham Park Investors LLC has proposed the annexation of seventeen point six acres located along Chatham Parkway just south of the US sixty-four bypass. The parcel is owned PDD and is currently vacant. A public hearing was held on April twenty-second. New citizens chose to speak, their recommendation is to adopt the ordinance.
These are, um, motion of...
Correct.
The discussion?
Are there any risks to having this project approved in terms of demand for services aside from sewer? Take a order.
Any risks?
I mean, if it's, if it's annexed and the police can't even get to it, that's basically most...
There are other subdivision, other projects that have been approved, numerous properties in town that...
That are this far back?
Don't have access, well, maybe not this far, but technically right now it does have access, but the police can get to it if they needed to. Because this is the February two thousand nineteen aerial, I don't know if you can see it this one, but they've got the ramps. This is the old ones, but they've got the ramps in now off of sixty-four.
But Chatham Parkway is not connected? Connected, but it's not open.
If the police had to access it, then they could.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Phil LeBaldwin moved. That was fully seconded, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. And the zoning text amendment, priority use to...
This is zoning text amendment two zero one nine dash zero one. Luke McMahon is requesting an amendment to the permitted use table of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance. Currently, the table allows vocational uses, vocational businesses, secretarial schools and music or dance studios by right in zoning districts C one, C two, C four, M one, M two, M U P D and by special use permit in districts O and I and R A. The applicant is requesting that this set of uses also be allowed by special use permit in the R A two zoning district, and the R A two is owned in the lime, is the lime or lime green color. A public hearing was held on April twenty-second. There were three speakers who chose to voice their support for this amendment. The planning board reviewed this request at their meeting on May sixth. Board found this text movement to be, to be consistent with our future land use plan and voted to approve in a vote of five to zero.
Questions for Victoria or is there a motion?
I think that the health and noise ordinance is, this place should be noisy, I mean, if there's noise, noise in this area.
Noise ordinance probably would not apply in the ETJ. Well, that'd be county's order of noise ordinance. Sure. All right, I think that the fact that it's requesting a special, I don't know, applies a little bit more that the board panels can realize situations on the performance of the facility, so I think, I think making a special use permit was a smart move.
I guess that's true.
Special use permit.
True, and Michael Fiocca?
Please do your consistency statement.
Yes. As to the consistency, Michael Fiocca...
Motion to find inconsistency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by John LeBaldwin. Further discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Respect to the ordinance itself, and motion by Michael Fiocca, moved.
Second.
Taken by John LeBaldwin. Those who favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Under the, site plan review, Victoria, two ninety-three.
This is site plan two zero one eight dash zero five. Kay Diamond USA LLC has invented plans for review and recommendation. The, this is one point one eight, one seven acre site located on parcel nine, one, two, seven, eight, and is owned C two highway commercial. The proposal is to construct a five thousand eight hundred thirty-four square foot single story structure to be used for general retail. The parking lot for the structure is proposed to be connected to the parking lot for the office building to the west. Town utilities are within the immediate vicinity and the applicant is arguing their sewer allocation request. The planning board reviewed this plan at their meeting on May sixth. The board posed questions regarding drainage across the site and cross access easement. Ultimately, they found the plan to be satisfactory and recommended approval in a vote of five to zero. The plans for this site have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development ordinance by the appropriate department and staff is recommending approval of this site plan.
Other questions for Victoria or the engineering site, Mark Ashen?
Creative use of sidewalks. Do you have a small water pipe? Directing control or to the...
Motion by Michael Fiocca to approve?
I just had a question about, um, the sidewalks out front. We are proposing a sidewalk across our property. The right of way is much wider in this location. Traditionally, you have twenty feet maybe off the edge of pavement. In this instance, we've probably got closer to forty feet off the edge of pavement, so that there's a swale that's already running along the road and we have the sidewalk on the backside of the swale. Y'all have done that on some of your street improvement projects already in town, same concept.
So you appreciate this, not just like the...
No problem.
I think it has been particularly, um, has flooded a great deal previously in the last little while. Not sure where the problem is, probably up to the backstreet entrance there.
Not sure where the problem is, probably up at the backstreet entrance there.
There is a lot of overland water that comes into the northeast corner of the site and we have a pretty large riprap swell that we're bringing to the to the existing street swell there on sixty four business and then conveying that down.
Thank you.
Motion by Michael Fierco, second by Pamela Baldwin. Those who favor consent, you can get up saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the site plan review for the information center.
This is site plan two zero one eight or zero six. Chatham Park Investors LLC has submitted plans for review. The ten point eight nine acre site is located in the Chatham Park PDD and is currently vacant. John, if you want to look these through the February two thousand nineteen aerials. The proposal to use the site as a three thousand five hundred square foot office building. The site is located just south, just south of the recently constructed Chatham Parkway Bridge directly across from the ramp to the US sixty four bypass. The applicant has requested a sewer allocation of three hundred gallons per day. The planning board reviewed this. Here are some elevations that the applicant has presented. The planning board reviewed this plan at their May sixth meeting. The board had questions regarding the possibility of lighting along the roof line, the adequacy of parking and the location of open space provided. Ultimately, the plans were found to be satisfactory and the board recommended approval in a vote of five to zero. The plans for this site have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development ordinances by the appropriate departments and staff is recommending approval of the proposed site plan. Oh, and I think Elizabeth and Hunter may have a strong representation for you.
We will keep this very brief, but this is the first project with Chatham Park that's come in since the stormwater element was adopted. And so I'm going to give a brief explanation of kind of here we are. I'm going to pass around the exceptional design score for Rishi. If you can kind of talk through what the two scores are that are represented in here. What was put in the memo was the the final score and I think there's a small update in what was presented, what we got here, but it's just a just kind of item. So we'll. Hunter, it's clear and then we're both available to questions if you've got any further questions.
All right, so as Elizabeth passes those out, just a quick update on the stormwater element and especially the exceptional design ranking. And I'll speak in general terms because the scoring is done on the sub watershed level. So it's not a specific plan for a specific site plan. This is the cumulative effect of all approved and in review site plans that are being considered. So we've had a number of discussions. We meet biweekly, if not more often than that, to discuss about plans, submittals and documentation and how things are coming through the DRC and specific items that need to be reviewed by me and signed like the exceptional design score that is something that I need to sign and seal before it gets to the town for review. So we've had a number of discussions about the operation of just that process and made some, I think, a lot of progress since the element's been approved and we can, we will continue to make progress there to streamline that process to make it as efficient and non burdensome as possible so that Elizabeth can review plans and we can have all of the data there. And so speaking to the process, we've made a lot of improvement there. We will, that's just going to be an ongoing thing. As far as these submittals, the the information you have in front of you, there's a lot of data that comes in with every project. We've got two scores that we're now going to compute with every submittal. The first one being what's listed on here or what we're calling sort of the official score and that represents all approved plans or constructed plans or plans that are up for stormwater discharge permits at the time of consideration. So those are really when the rubber hits the road, when we have to comply with the element, that's the official, what we're calling the official score. The preliminary score, which is attached to this, is all site plans that are up for consideration. So those are preliminary site plan approvals, things that are in review, comments are ongoing. There are still changes being made, but it's sort of the predictive, here's what this might look like if everything theoretically were approved that day. But it's not the official element compliance score that that we are submitting for approval, if that makes sense. So we've just tried to look at both of those scenarios so that we can all have the same picture of where watersheds are trending. Is anything getting close to the limit? Do we need to start looking at refinements to plans or does Elizabeth need to sort of put a little bit more, I'll call a little bit more scrutiny into future approvals and how how the watershed will act so that we make sure we don't get to a non compliance situation. So no one wants that. So that just gives us a way of looking towards that. As far as the sales center and this submittal for now, it's included in the official score along with Chatham Parkway, which are the two projects that are at this stage. Subdivision North also has a large portion in here and that's included in the preliminary score. And so you'll see a difference and a difference in scores tabulated there, but against subdivision North is not final yet. There may still be improvements there that can gain more points, but both of them reflect a what would be a compliance situation. As it stands with Chatham Parkway and the sales center, they represent a fairly low percentage of the overall watershed, which is why we see a fairly high score right now that's not approaching the limit. It's because we're somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve percent developed with the remaining eighty eight percent as far as the score is concerned being undeveloped woods. And that score is higher and and trends the score to be a higher score than than what we'll see in a fully developed watershed. So really all of these start approaching the target score or somewhere closer to one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty five points as more development happens. Now, as far as what we've been seeing trending wise with the operation and the framework of this and meeting the intent, we are absolutely seeing that that impacts to natural resources have a direct negative implication on the score. What the score was intended to do was to encourage developers to minimize those impacts in order to maintain a higher score. We are also seeing sites that are, we, through the DRC process and through consultation with the engineers, we are improving stormwater management plans and tree planting plans and things of that nature in order to maintain a total that does not imperil future development. So on those big picture items, it is meeting the intent of of what the element was intended to do. All that being said, with the tree protection element and other discussions that have happened since the stormwater approval, we're now at about six months and we know that we do need to revisit these categories to make sure that they are working as intended and there may be minor revisions to points that we will bring forward in the next month or two for your consideration and with the support of the town. So this is not static. It is working as intended. It's not perfect, but we're going to continue to work at it to get there to so that we're seeing, so we see really the broad spectrum of environmental protection as intended. So that's my very quick update. Happy to answer any questions that you may have on this. There are also some some typos in the Excel spreadsheet that are being fixed as we make these submittals, so happy to discuss any of the numbers in that and if you want to get to that level.
That's what we're at.
Further information that's in the.
Good to see this scoring system. Been looking forward to it, so I'm processing it right now.
Right, no, it's future, whether it's a future board meeting or a workshop in the future that we may want to put on the radar to sort of revisit and how that we've got a more more education about the whole process.
Thank you. Last item on the children and.
Do you need to actually approve?
We need to include the score we're here to. The score was represented in staff reports. And the allocation.
I have one common site experience that the unique charging stations are considered handicap accessible and I think that if it is installed and not handicap accessible, there will be a problem some see up because Chatham County is thinking that. Painful. Might do the worst in building. Kind of at the far side of the parking lot is often better. Less likely get blocked. Think that might exacerbate the accessibility issue.
Okay, so we have a motion. The information center and it's a stormwater thing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Michael Fierco, second by Pamela Baldwin. Those who favor consent, you can get up saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Call it. Should I have another thing?
Yes, ma'am. In your agenda package, there is a draft settlement agreement that resolves a number of issues that arose a year ago in May of last year with a letter from the Division of Water Resources to the town that questioned commitments and mitigation strategy set forth in an environmental impact statement that the town had prepared back in two thousand and ten in relation to the application for MPDE permit for the three point two, two million gallons of discharge into the Hall River and Robertson Creek in connection with the new wastewater treatment plant. And as a result of that letter and the questions it raised, both Chatham Park and the town filed petitions for hearings before the administrative office, Office of Administrative Hearing, excuse me. And since then, for the last eleven months, we have been trying to resolve the issues that were initially raised by the letter or at least threatened in the letter and have been in connection with the contested cases that the town and Chatham Park have filed. This draft agreement is a result of a lot of work over the last several months by lawyers from the Attorney General's Office representing DWR, Chatham Park and myself. I was outnumbered in all of them, but at any rate, this draft agreement is basically a three way situation where Chatham Park agrees to do certain things, the DWR and also an associated state agency, the Division of Energy, Mineral and Land Resources that also has some stormwater authority have agreed to do certain things. As I set forth in the memo to you all last week, the the only agreement that the town or obligation the town has is to consider certain, certain amendments to the open space element that the Chatham Park is going to preserve. A summary of the elements, the amendments is attached to the agreement. One section involves riparian buffers in the northern portion of Chatham Park north of the highway sixty four. And there's also proposed changes to the table of uses that's already in the open space element as well. So towns, according to this agreement, the town would be obligated to consider that in decorse and and also to file a dismissal without prejudice of the contested case petition and to be able to refile it in the event that the final approval of this does not occur within six months. Chatham Park, on the other hand, has set forth in the in my letter and also in the agreement that the town would adopt this scoring mechanism and to evaluate stormwater measures and the exceptional design evaluation and to make it available to the town and also to DWR on a website to be able to verify the information that like Hunter has just provided to the town and to Elizabeth in the course of evaluation of various plans that come forward. Chatham Park will also propose amendment, as I said, to the open space element to increase buffers along Hall River and to provide for the additional riparian buffers for perennial streams and also some of the intermittent streams that flow to the Hall River in the northern portion of the PDD. And they will, they promise not to ever suggest that the buffers be reduced or to assist other third parties that might petition for the third party, for the buffers to be reduced. They also would dismiss their contested case petition and be able to refile it if the final approval is not granted. The state, on the other hand, proposes things that are beneficial to the town in relation to the Forest Bank project and to the MPDE permit involving Old Moore State that they would not recommend or suggest any further mitigation measures other than what we have in place now and the additional buffers that Chatham Park is proposing in connection with the Forest Bank and the MPDE permit. They would acknowledge that the existing measures are at least as required as much as the state and local government regulations would provide and they would address the reasonably foreseeable indirect secondary cumulative impacts on water quality associated with these permits. And they would rescind the two thousand and eight letter from DWR to the town. Benefits to the town are that with these obligations from DWR, the town's application for the, to for the DWI, the other state agency involved in the Forest Bank project in connection with that, they were interested in the secondary cumulative impacts related to development and with the DWR promise in this agreement, that should pose less of a problem than it otherwise could have. And also with respect to the modification of MPDE permit for the, to allow the Old Moore State to discharge into the, into the creek, it should help that as well. So on balance, because of the benefits to the town with respect to those other projects and the decision of the letter from last year, I certainly would recommend approval of this agreement. In terms of the amendment to the open space element will be proposed by Chatham Park and then you all consider that in the normal course of the amendments to those elements involving, you know, public hearing and review by the planning board and then of course your decision. So it could take, you know, a little while to get all that accomplished, but the essence of what the amendment would be is listed in the exhibit to the agreement. If you all have any questions about any of that, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
What would you say with respect to the speaker who during the public expression period protested the fact that the protection by password doesn't equal transparency?
Well, first of all, the information is available to the town. It's available to DWR if they choose to want to do that. The purpose of the information that is generated by this particular website is used by Elizabeth to evaluate the proposals and plans. She can have access to the site to be able to verify the information that has been presented to her. That information, once the town receives it, is, I think, a public record and then accessible by members of the public who are interested and who want to pursue that. The website itself, according to this agreement, is owned by Chatham Park and that information may be, may be public, may be proprietary. We're not trying to resolve that issue in this agreement, but if it is a public record, then of course the public would have a right to see that. The only information the town is going to have is the site address and the password to be able to access that. If anybody requests that, this agreement provides that the town would notify Chatham Park if somebody has requested this information and then Chatham Park can then take whatever steps it thinks is appropriate to try to protect that. It may be confidential under the law if it's a trade secret or some kind of proprietary information. That's not for the town to decide. Under this agreement, that's for Chatham Park and whoever is asking for that information. So the information is transparent as soon as it hits Elizabeth's desk and it's available for anybody to to see. That's what I would say about that. The password is public. The site address is public. The town is just obligated to notify Chatham Park before it releases that.
Questions for the board? Questions from the board?
It is probably really important to vote on this tonight.
Do you have a read of the thing?
Ma'am?
I haven't read the whole thing yet.
It really is probably very important to adopt this tonight.
I was looking for any kind of guidance on time or deadline of approval of the agreement. I was not even finding that language.
But there is not anything in this language that says that there is a deadline. Chatham Park has approved this. The state has approved this. The state's approval is contingent on the town approving this. If it's not done promptly, the state's approval may disappear. Second.
Motion by Michael Field for seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please.
Discussion, please.
Discussion.
Truth to protocol. I have received concerns from constituents that there hasn't been adequate time for review of this over Mother's Day weekend, the time when folks have been reluctant to dedicate all that time to create a legal document. I also have some questions. And I'm curious to hear to what extent our planning and engineering staff have reviewed this in the context of the additional elements that have already approved.
I have been involved during the review of this document and it was a business stake component and they're working with the town on that.
Multiple iterations.
And have planning staff also?
Yeah, I've been involved in the planning.
There's also an outline of the stormwater process that can be, the however, have worked along with the district to make sure that represents what we, what we need from it.
And Mr. Messick asked earlier, can you defer, what are we hearing from the divisional charge for approving our clean water regulations?
We have not had any contact with them. The engineer has proposed a timeframe, assuming that you all were to approve this. He's prepared to go forward with an amendment to the engineering documents that have to be submitted to DWI that will relate, will cover the secondary cumulative impact question that they had raised earlier. And they will process that and set up a schedule for the, where they advertise for comments to the revised engineering plans. That should take at least 30 days. Presumably DWI will ask DWR what it thinks about the secondary cumulative impact mitigation measures that the town has. And according to this agreement, DWR is going to say that the measures are adequate and we anticipate that that will satisfy DWI. But there's no guarantees of that, however, but at least it's a step along the way. I would, I would like to point out, there's two, two changes since Thursday when you got this from me in the signature pages with regard to the DEMR. There is a notice provision that gives a name and an address for somebody who's going to be contacted on behalf of that agency, including Danny Smith, who works for DWR and is the regional supervisor. The only other change was in the ninth whereas, with the illegal agreement without whereases, and little I, where the version that you have in your agenda package that says the town is seeking related renewal and modification of the MPDES permit. The new language that the state would like them to see is that the town intends to seek related renewal and modification. I'm not sure what the difference between seeking and intend to seek is, but that's what they wanted to say.
So the hard copy that we have does not reflect what you just said?
No, sir. I just said it was a change.
Can you please repeat that?
Well, it's on page...
Two thirty-two.
Yes.
I don't know.
Little, little two, little double I. It says intends to seek. Ma'am, it says seek in your version. And the only other change was in the signature page for DEMR, which is provided for Mr. Smith's email address and contact information.
So in previous town board meetings, my friends at Chatham Park investors stated they would add 50 feet to the 300-foot buffer on the hall in the upstream section here by the beach. I'm not seeing that as part of this settlement agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we've had verbal pledge that that would happen, but yet that's not. That didn't enter into discussions with the Q.
Call us talking about that. What you see written here is what we talked about.
In Exhibit One.
Yes ma'am. And again, this is a, you know, part of a, an application for an amendment to the element. By approving this agreement, you don't necessarily have to approve the change to the element tonight. But this is what Chatham Park is obligated to submit to you.
Okay. Mr. Goodson, there are only two buffer categories now exempt and allowable instead of the three we used to have?
So this is...
What are the implications of that?
So this is speaking to, just the additional buffer, not the town's 50-foot perennial mineral stream buffer that's regular by the bucket area. Buffer isn't, left here is buffer and it's still fine to that initial 50 feet. So we do have exempt allowable and allowable mitigation for that, just as we always have. This only speaks to the additional buffer. And since they are the ones offering that buffer, the allowable mitigation is not really necessary, that, and so they're only the two categories at that point. But the list of table pieces will be only for the official, that is one change that is directed at Q that would actually require some staff to make that change. Does that be clear?
And to go back to the concern about public records, Mr. Messick, you said that the website and the password would become public information?
Yes.
Is any other information needed to access that? Mr. Goodson, will you have a user ID?
At this point, it is not worked out to me. It takes up the password piece of them. We'll be doing that over the next three or four years of time, but...
The website is not supposed to, under this agreement, does not have to be, you know, created and effective until 90 days after you all approve the amendment. I think the implication is if you have a password, you can access the information.
So Exhibit One, this does not become effective until we vote on that?
Ma'am? I didn't understand.
Exhibit One, this does not become effective unless we vote on it?
Yes ma'am, it will be part of an amendment to the open space element that will have to be submitted by Chatham Park. It will have to be then processed by the planning department. It will have to go to the public hearing. It will have to go to the planning board review and then come back to you for decision. But it will say at least this much.
So page twenty-six, twenty-seven, it's pretty meaty. And I'm wondering, Mr. Goodson, if you're able to help us understand what might be the practical implications of those changes?
A lot of the specific things that were outlined in that element is it was a way to document it in a written form and subway down for this document. It was not intended to be less restricted than the element. It really was intended to add a high level of, you know, maintenance performance. So things like the subwater shift score, we, we, we bring back the four weeks and updating that, it takes more information. That is part of this website in that process of giving that additional information. This is the piece of that, the process of the middle and the view and what my role is, what Hunter is, this stormwater minister's role is, that, that's what this is for.
And Mr. Courseback said if there's anything further that would represent that, that information, I don't know if I can obviously, we work together on outlining this so that it could be able to be included in the document for clarity of, of minimum high level outline.
The state was interested in, in the town having a tracking system and having a written policy to be able, like you said, if Elizabeth gets taken up by the aliens, whoever takes her place will have a written policy to be able to follow, to be able to deal with Hunter and all these applications that come up. So that's the reason for this being in here and they have worked together to develop this.
Oh, I understand the reason why it's in there. I'm still trying to keep my head wrapped around what the implications are and I think we're going to see that in the text amendments that will be forthcoming. It's, yeah, it's regrettable that to a significant extent, you know, policy decisions were made without board input. And that was why I requested, was it April 28th for our last board meeting, the closed session, which I'm only now noticing we didn't get added to the agenda. And yet we had a five oh jury, a five oh approval for that closed session to discuss the litigation.
This will resolve the litigation.
But it doesn't resolve other matters that we need to discuss regarding litigation.
That's fine.
So a big important part of the original EIS attached to our MPDES permit, an important part of that mitigation strategy was changes to reduce imperious surfaces, especially north of Highway 64. But that was not a part of this settlement.
Yes, sir, it is.
It is?
Yes.
How can I understand where?
Stormwater program, the stormwater element that you've adopted addresses that.
I guess it goes to the last question. What are the practical implications of that? Does Q agree to this?
Help write to me if I can offhand on this, but there's a part, there's a portion of the EIS that I think you're referencing, dated communications on the perennial surface or to provide stormwater control measures. The, or provide stormwater control measures is what this stormwater element is about. So they enter it by addressing stormwater, you could address the intent of that segment.
As before, just as a matter of principle, I think that we need to give this a little more deliberation. I'll be very happy to vote on this at the next board meeting. So I'll oppose this passage tonight.
Any further questions? We have a motion on the floor. Any questions? Those in favor, please, seem to keep a thing eye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Next.
Motion carried.
As a point of process, what can we do about a closed session that was requested approved on Jordan's board in the last meeting to add to the agenda? Did it appear on this agenda? April 22nd, it's noted in this regarding new business budget for this amendment for attorney's fees, Commissioner Bond has made a motion that since item, this item regards litigation, to be placed in the May 13th agenda as a closed session. Second effect, Commissioner Foley has reported to vote out five in favor. Is that public notice? So I would, we have a closed session?
This quarter of the question.
I understand.
Well, I'm, we did not place that on the agenda. My impression was that it was a matter that didn't have the same sense of priority that this people would want to do. But I may be interpreting that. I did not bring that with manager, so it did not go on. If you still, if it needs to be on the next meeting, I think we do that. So I'll open one of the third sessions regarding that litigation at the next meeting. Additional updates to the report from Commissioner's concerns? Jay Farrell, you all start the team.
No ma'am, I haven't got it.
Uh, just one title. We need to, uh, get a statement in the review that says the project has been reviewed by the town and all the other departments. Then it says they just added 50, so it says we need five, that it meets those criteria.
We wouldn't recommend it if we didn't find it.
I understand that.
So that's, that's the, that was the answer. We will, we will, we'll make that statement.
Okay. It was just, it's...
Intimated.
Yeah.
I mean, like, that's what I'd say.
John's on.
So our next meeting is the 28th.
Oh, is it the other meeting?
Oh, sorry, the next, this board, this meeting, regular work session, regular meeting is Tuesday, the 28th. So I would ask that in addition to that closed session regarding mitigation, we also have on next agenda, discussion of traffic calling policy. Thank you, Mr. Bruce Beck. If you can circulate that again electronically.
So you want me to circulate it a third time?
Yes, please. Please post it to the agenda. And the evacuation round, let's please also have that on the agenda.
What are we talking about?
Continue per from the evacuation round.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Question, question, return?
No.
Second.
You're involved in, I mean, the track to you.